Hello and good evening. Today is July 19th, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. And it is 6:45 PM. If you would please join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, if you could please take the roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And first category on our agenda, as with all nights, is ceremonial matters and presentations. Tonight, we have one presentation in ceremonial matter. That is to consider a proclamation of July as Parks and Recreation Month, as we do every year. We're deeply grateful to our Parks and Recreation Department for enhancing the quality of life of Cupertino and the region. And as always, we are considering this proclamation in July as part of our way of thanking the department and all of its excellent employees and representatives. So, Madam City Clerk, I believe that we do have a representative of the department here. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. Acting Director of Parks and Recreation Rochelle Sander will be receiving the proclamation on behalf of the department.
Okay, very good. Really appreciate it. And so Rochelle, would you like to say a few words about the department at this time?
Yeah, I'll be brief. But, you know, the last two years have really been a think outside the box for the Parks and Recreation team. And the staff has just done a fabulous job of still bringing amazing opportunities to our community. And so I'm just very proud of them. But in all honesty, we're all just so excited to actually see the community face to face and bring back all our fabulous events and programs. And so we really appreciate this proclamation. We love Parks and Recreation Month, and we love to see everyone come out and enjoy everything we're able to offer. So, thank you.
You're absolutely welcome, Rochelle. And again, thank you and kudos to the department. You guys were just amazing through the pandemic. You were able to organize all sorts of activities for the community. We even had a trick or treating event that was, you know, safe in that first year. And I've just been so incredibly impressed by the response and the caring attitude of the department towards the residents in the community. So, just to let everyone know, we are in a hybrid environment, not that that wasn't obvious already. But with regard to having our still shot, what we're going to do is to have council, as well as Rochelle, keep their camera on. Everyone else, please cut your camera. And with regard to the fact that we have sort of a mixed environment right now, what we're asking our council to do is to have a couple of people that are taking the meeting remotely so that we can space out on the dais. And so we do have Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow taking the meeting remotely tonight. And so what we're going to do for this, we're going to take a quick photo of the proclamation in the middle with the city council members. And so if we would just take a moment and look into your Zoom cameras. Okay, well, thanks, everyone, and thanks Rochelle. Thanks again for everybody in the department and in the city for, you know, bringing forth just an incredible and very flexible suite of options for enhancing the quality of life for our city. So that will do it for our --
Mayor?
Yes.
I do see one hand raised under the attendees.
Okay, very good. So I do have, well, so typically, we don't have commentary on ceremonial matters and proclamations. But let me check in with our city attorney as to what the appropriate protocol is. Chris, do you think I could open it up for perhaps one minute of commentary if people would like to speak on this proclamation?
That would be within your discretion.
That's within my discretion? Okay, so just a reminder on, yeah, okay. So, very good. Let's go ahead and do that. And I'll go ahead and impose the same rules with regard to having your hand raised. By the time the first person is speaking, you'll have a minute to speak on this item. As to whether we make this a regular thing, let's make that a TBD. We do have a very packed agenda night, so please be brief with your comments. Much appreciated. Lisa Warren, you have your hand raised. And that's it for the hands at this point. Lisa, welcome. And Lisa, you're not unmuting. So perhaps you had your hand raised for oral communications.
That is correct.
Okay, and so let me go ahead and go to the other hand raised. That is with Dinesha. Dinesha, did you want to speak on this, or did you want to speak on oral communications?
I wanted to speak on orals, please.
Okay, well, perfect. So let's just go ahead and, you know, close out the ceremonial matters. And we are on to postponements and orders of the day. Is there any requests from staff, Madam City Clerk, or from our acting city manager with regard to reordering or postponing any of the items on tonight's agenda? I see a head shaking from Diane on Zoom. And Madam City Clerk, was there anything?
No postponements, Mayor.
No postponement, no, okay. So let me go to our city council. Any of my fellow council members have any requests for postponements or reordering at this time? Okay, so let me make this request. Item number, and let me scroll down so I have the right item number here. For item number 28, that is the consideration of the appointment of Pamela Wu as the city manager. We are timing it internally at 8:30 right now. I have a request that if we get to it before 8:30, that we take the next item so that we can provide ample amount of time for Pamela, who is staffing a San Bruno Planning Commission meeting right now. She oversees the several departments there, but the person who manages that is on vacation right now. So she's staffing that Planning Commission meeting, and she anticipates to be ready, I believe it was 9 o'clock. So my request is that I, you know, get a second for a motion. If we get to item number 28 before 9, to simply put it behind the next item until we get to that time. May I have a second for that motion? And I do see a hand raised. I saw a head nod from Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei, did you want to second that meeting?
Yes, I've seconded it.
That motion, rather. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciated. And I don't see any further hands for comments from the council. So let us go ahead and take a vote on that motion, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And let us go on to oral communications now. Oral communications are for any item that is not on the agenda. And so I understand that we have a few blue cards. Typically, what we do is we go to the Zoom hands first, and then we ask that the blue cards be handed in before the first person is done speaking. Everyone has three minutes. Right now, I have hands on Zoom from Dinesha Tchamansky, Mooney Matpatla, and Jennifer. And Madam City Clerk, I believe you had handed me a few blue cards. So we have five blue cards right now. By the time the first person is done speaking on Zoom, please have your blue card in. Or you can also email cityclerk@cupidino.org. And the city clerk, after we enter in the blue cards commentary into the record, will go ahead and read up the three minutes of the comment from email. So, Dinesha, you are our first speaker. Welcome.
Speaking, everyone has three minutes. Right now, I have hands on Zoom from Dinesha Tchamansky, Mooney Matpatla, and Jennifer.
Dinesha, you might want to turn the volume down on your YouTube.
Yeah, I've got a technical difficulty. Can you come back to me? I'm sorry.
Why don't we do that? Okay, great. So we'll consider our first speaker, Mooney. That was a very surreal experience. So let's go ahead and, Mooney, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and the council. Could you hear me all right?
Yes, you're audible. Welcome.
Okay, thank you, yeah. So I sent what I'm going to say here, and I also sent it as an email. So I've asked city clerk to include as part of, you know, written communications. So my name is Mooney Matpatla. I am a resident of Cupertino and also vice chair of Planning Commission. But I'm speaking here as a resident representing myself, not in any official capacity. I've sent multiple emails on this topic in the past, so this is nothing new. It's just one more email. I'll continue to drive this point until I see something done about it, right? I'd like our city to explore ways to enable homeownership to our hardworking local residents of our community. It's unfair to allow foreigners not living in this country to purchase beautiful homes in our city totally unhindered and rent it back to our residents at unaffordable levels. You know, rents are going skyrocketing, right? And who knows how these foreigners acquired their wealth as the financial controls are not as stringent as, you know, our local controls. It could be drug money or bribery or, you know, blood money acquired through mafia or whatever. We don't know that. But we have stringent controls, you know, for our residents. And I also included a link that talks about, you know, $60 billion worth of, you know, US properties, you know, homes being purchased by, you know, people living outside the country, right? Foreign ownership. So please do something to help our local residents realize the American dream of owning and living in your home instead of becoming perennial renters subjected to unfair competition from overseas. Many countries and provinces around the globe have implemented several schemes, such as, you know, foreign ownership tax and, you know, a few other mechanisms to help the local residents to be able to buy and own a home. I understand this is a free market. We should allow the market to work. That's, you know, how US operates. But unfortunately, you know, it's not a free market when people are subjected to different sets of rules, right? The foreign investors can buy stocks and other types of instruments that are available in the free market, but not the homes that are essential for living. Roof overhead is very important for our residents, so please do something. I really appreciate, you know, if our city can do, enact some laws, you know, that helps our local residents against, you know, foreign ownership of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mooney. And the remaining hands raised on Zoom are from Jennifer and from Lisa Warren. I have blue cards from Rhoda, from Humberto Nava. I apologize if I'm pronouncing the name incorrectly. From Brooke Ezot, from Walter Picon, I believe, Byron, and from Byron Picon Oriana. And Madam City Clerk, were there any other blue cards that showed up during the time that Mooney was speaking?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and were there any emails that you received during that time for oral communications?
I do have one, Mayor.
Okay, so one email. And we'll have a couple more of the Zoom speakers. And I believe that, I believe that Dinesha Tchamansky also had her hand raised. So she gets back on, perhaps there was a technical issue with the machine, and raises her hand. We'll go ahead and call on her since she was our first speaker originally. And so Jennifer, you are next. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And, yeah, I had the TV on, so I know I got with the sound down. So, yeah, lots of challenges here. But anyway, I wanted to talk tonight again about something I had mentioned before. This is AB 2011 by Assemblymember Buffy Wicks. And I think Senator Weiner is a co-bill writer. This bill, I think, is set to go through the final okays by, let's see, the Senate would be because it's an AB, and then go on to the governor. But this is the one that would allow by right ministerial construction of homes, high-density housing, on any commercial site. This means tech parks, shopping centers, high-rise, office buildings, medical centers. And it's even, it's really a very, very bad piece of bill work, I would call it, because I think it was put in as a gut and amend two months ago. And it's, it's just, it's completely ignoring CQ. We have a lot of land that could be used as building sites by this bill that are contaminated former tech areas. There are tech parks that have contamination sites on them. They may be okay for office, but you cannot put housing on them. You could have potential superfund sites that you cannot, you cannot avoid. Whatever you do with bills, you cannot overlook contaminated properties. And this is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I am astounded by how naive the bill writers were by this type of bill. You cannot put people's lives at risk by building housing ministerial on contaminated sites. That is against the law. And I really, really am concerned that having bills like this that are just rushed through the, I guess, sailed through the assembly, and it's probably going to sail through the Senate, but it's against the law. You cannot build these things. It's against the law. It's dangerous. You've got land contaminated by PCBs, carbon tetra chloride. They cause cancer. So we need to stop this bill. I understand ABAG is potentially going to recommend a yay on it. ABAG, that was the one where the inflated RIN numbers came from. I am so upset about the circular file here of --
15 seconds.
Yes, we're going to have allow housing on contaminated lands, and ABAG is endorsing it without the public being able to say anything on it. I hope the governor does not sign it. There's also SB 6.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I just, I know that the discussion, this is, the discussion on Mitty, Lawrence Mitty, soon to be renamed, hopefully, is over, and it's not on this agenda. So I think it's fine for me to make a comment because I was taken aback, actually, about the suggestion of a skate park or a bike park. I think that is absolutely the wrong place for that, and I think that was addressed in all of the community input. It was on this list of options when the tour happened and everything else, and it's been obviously removed for reason. And it's not a large enough site. You've got people right across the creek that are not going to want that noise. They already have Lawrence's noise. It's just a really bad idea. A great place for a bike, excuse me, a skate park would be Memorial Park. So as these ponds are being removed and that is being reimagined, that is a better, far better place for something like that. And I really appreciate Councilmember Moore, I think, hinting at that when she asked that consultants and staff maintain the integrity of the community input. And I heard Council Vice Mayor Chow say that she wanted to make sure the residents were happy with that. But I can tell you, out of the respondents, the closest residents do not want a skate park. So, and I also was remiss in commenting about how great the cleanup effort was. I could not be there. I heard about the results. Definitely another one. And I want to also add that I was walking part of the trail a week, I think it was ago, that I saw Public Works people there trimming up trees that badly needed it and cleaning it up in the southern portion that is now accessible. So that was being cleaned up, which is something was also asked during these park tours. So thank you for that, and continue to do that, and then water the trees that are planted. And I can also, and I will put this in an email, but Mary Gomez Park on Santa Tomas and Forbes and Santa Clara is another linear park that is right on Santa Tomas. If more ideas are needed, it's a much larger site, wider, so, and no creek that I'm aware of. So it's not exactly the same animal. But they do have two parcels that are parking lots, I believe it's two, definitely one, that were originally homes on the street behind. And that's an access point to the park. It's actually the main entrance. And they somehow got those properties and were able to make small parking lots. So, anyway, I had other things to talk about, but I really needed to backtrack and talk about that. So thank you, council, for hearing that, even though the proper staff may not have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is a blue card live. This is from Rhoda. Welcome, Rhoda. And as Rhoda's coming up, I'll just remind everyone that order Humberto Nava, followed by Brooke Ezot, followed by Walter Picon, followed by Byron Picon Oriana. And one email from the city clerk. And if Dinesha gets back on to Zoom, we'll call on her. Welcome, Rhoda. Good to see you.
Hi, I wanted to echo Jennifer Griffin's comments and also to thank the city council for looking into the toxics at the former Velco site. I know that I've seen letters from the former mayor Loenthal and other former leaders pressing the county to rush, rush on getting these toxics taken care of. We need to get things right the first time, protect our residents. So, and actually, cleaning up the toxics is good for jobs, too. So I want to thank you for that. Now, on to my mashup of other topics. I do have a slide up there. Great. Last meeting, former executive director of the Chamber of Commerce talked about how the chamber was not related to the PAC for political contributions. However, when the, as the chamber endorses candidates, there's a value to that. Not only that, but the chamber had also provided services in kind to the PAC that they had, that was supposed to be somewhat independent. And here's a document that shows that. And why am I saying this? I think that the chamber does a lot of good things for the city, but they're also a lobbying organization, and their focus is on their members, not necessarily all Cupertino businesses. In fact, they'll recommend businesses outside of Cupertino if they're members before they recommend businesses inside Cupertino. So a number of cities are starting to do some disconnecting between the city and the other chambers. And it just feels all kind of cringy to me that there's, that we've given the chamber $215,000 since 2015 with very little return, if you kind of look at how we're doing in tax dollars as comparison. Okay, so now on to my other topics, which I'm trying to get through really quickly. You know, I want to talk a little bit about the budget and shopping Cupertino. So a typical online shopper, if you spend $100 on goods and you're in Cupertino, a buck goes to Cupertino at sales tax. Great, love it. Consumed in Cupertino. Now, if you shop at Staples online, Staples isn't Cupertino. If you shop at Staples online, guess what? That buck gets split between Staples and the City of Ontario. Does not come to Cupertino. Doesn't seem very fair, does it? Now, many cities have these agreements with businesses like Best Buy, Home Depot, eBay, and guess what? Apple. Now, according to Bloomberg, and I've got some articles here, Apple gets about 80, has gotten about $80 million from this type of deal. And our city gets a lot of tax dollars for that. Those dollars are at risk. The state is being lobbied to put this to an end. That puts millions of tax dollars at risk, and we need to be more careful with our tax dollars. I remember that we didn't have enough money to spend $40,000 on ADA door here, which, by the way, is not working anymore. So we need to be careful with our tax dollars. The other thing I want to mention is, thanks to Councilmember Liang, there was a couple of --
15 seconds.
-- items that appeared to be SIP items that never appeared on the SIP that were being lobbied by our city manager for grant funds.
Thank you very much, Rhoda.
I'll submit this in written comment. Thank you.
Very good. Our next speaker is Humberto Nava. Welcome. And I apologize if I'm getting your first name right wrong. I didn't --
You got it just right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, Humberto.
Well, good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. Thank you for your time. My name is Humberto Nava, and I feel represented with the Carpenter's Union Local 405. I represent 3,876 members in Santa Clara County, and I'm here tonight with some Cupertino members that live here. I want to take the opportunity to talk about labor standards and all developments coming through the city of Cupertino and raise the floor for all workers. Construction workers particularly, those not represented by a union, are most likely to like healthcare and rely on government safety net programs. One out of four or 26% of construction workers in California like health insurance, two and a half times rate for all California workers. Also, apprenticeship programs success depends on apprentices being able to secure work opportunities. Without work opportunities, apprentices are likely to leave the industry for paying, for lower-paying careers. Policies such as prequalification helps ensure that contractors hire apprentices and are doing the part in building our community and construction workforce. Across the state, major projects often import an out-of-state and out-of-the-area workforce instead of training and building a local construction workforce. As more and more construction workers are forced into mega-commutes, local hiring policies can help bring stability to families and the community, ensuring workers can spend time with their families and participate in civic and community life instead of spending four hours a day in traffic. I ask you tonight to have labor standards and all developments come into Cupertino and elevate Cupertino's workforce. And I'm looking forward to have a conversation with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Humberto. And our next speaker is Brooke Ezot. Welcome, Brooke.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I hope you let me speak. I hope you don't regret it. The first, the first thing I wanted to ask was, I wanted to direct this to the city attorney and ask what the role of the city manager is in securing contracts and grants. And secondly, I wanted to commend the city staff and the council for reviewing contracts because we are no longer a one-stoplight city, and we need to have contracts in writing. We need to have deliverables, and we need to penalize people when they don't live up to their contractual obligations. We can't just simply give money to people because we like them. It's taxpayer money. And also, I wanted to address the election situation. I thought that we were going to keep a decent mode of conversation, but apparently on Nextdoor, the silly season has begun, and the council is being excoriated supposedly for a mass exodus of staff members and city managers and what have you. Well, first of all, the average tenure of a city manager is only three and a half years. That's not exactly job security. In these countings of city managers, they're including the interim city managers, and we all know that's a terminal position. So that's great if you want to increase the body count, but it's not, it's disingenuous to be charitable. And finally, some of the same people that are running around like their acolytes of Chicken Little are some of the same people that have gone and tried, went into a closed council meeting on the, on May 11th, 2018, and submitted letters to get the city attorney fired. So for doing his job, that's just unconscionable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brooke. Our next speaker is Walter Picon. And same goes with the pronunciation. I believe it's P-I-C-O-N, but I'm not 100% on that. So welcome, Walter.
Good afternoon, councilmember and mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Walter. I am a member of the Local 713. I am a resident of Cupertino. As new developments come to the city of Cupertino, receiving the skyline with new homes and commercial space, creating work opportunities is also a great opportunity to make sure that workers of Cupertino get opportunity to work in their projects and ensure that we have a standard in this project to protect the hard workers, families of Cupertino. As a member of the Carpenter's Union, I have ways to allow me to live here and contribute to the local community and spending my dollar here in the various same community I live in. Healthcare has given me a peace of mind. Become healthcare is a merit of when, not if, had, done, or led. Everyone needs to see the doctor and know having to really on public system. And like to see people from here get hired so we get the opportunity to live and work here close to home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Walter. Our next speaker is Byron Picon Oriana. Welcome, Byron.
Good evening, councilmember. Thank you for listening to me speak. My name is Byron. I am a Cupertino resident, a member of Local 713. I want to talk to about work opportunity here in the city. I want to talk to about work opportunity here in the city of Cupertino and require apprenticeship healthcare in local here and talk a place in Cupertino. Construction apprenticeship program in a classroom. Because I am incredible local student, construction apprenticeship. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Byron. And I believe next, let me check on the Zoom function, so we don't have Dinesh back here. So let's go to our city clerk, who had mentioned that there was one email that came in during the time allocated.
Yes, mayor, and Dinesh did actually email me as well because she's having technical issues.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's go ahead and read those two emails into the record.
Okay, so the first email is from Caitlin Wong. Dear Mayor Paul and City Council, with a few residents that are paid by special interests who constantly attack the city council, I wanted to just say thank you for all the city council has accomplished since 2018, when a majority resident-focused city council was elected. Councilman Willie often talks about the residents. He is spot on. The residents elected all of you, and it's vital that you act in residents' best interests. Major accomplishments that I have seen in the past six years: the official opening of the Apple Park campus and the wonderful open house that my family attended; the funding and completion of the library expansion and the $1 million in federal funding that was received; the overturning of the Valco Tier 2 approval, the SB 35 project, while flawed, provides a lot of affordable housing; it's sad that we didn't have a resident-focused city council back in 2017 because we gave up the chance for a really great project at Valco; the funding at all, the all-inclusive playground at Jolliman Park; the Via Shuttle, which my elderly parents use when visiting from Taiwan; and the $8.5 million in grant funding received to expand it; the acquisition of the Lawrence Midland, which was discussed earlier tonight; the off-leash dog area at Jolliman Park. I bring our golden retrievers there often, and they have a great time; the response to COVID-19, which resulted in Cupertino having the lowest infection rate in the county and perhaps the entire state; the seamless transition to remote working, for which the city and its IT director were praised in Forbes magazine; the addition of the Linda Vista and Regnart Creek Trails; the protected bike lanes that will help us become less dependent on cars; the paving program that has resulted in the best roads in the region; the lobbyist registration ordinance. It's unacceptable when organizations hide behind their nonprofit status to lobby the city on behalf of their corporate sponsors. Now, one of the worst offenders is suing the city over this vital ordinance; the investigation into taxpayers' monies being given away to the Chamber of Commerce; the recruitment of a new city manager. The city council acted quickly to rectify an unfortunate hiring decision. Sometimes these mistakes happen despite best efforts to avoid them. We are so fortunate to have a resident-focused city council. It was not always like this. It is vital that Cupertino residents continue to elect local members, local, elect council members that act in the best interest of the city and its residents, and that are not beholden to special interest groups and their lobbyists. We must not go backwards. Caitlin Wong, Cupertino resident. And I will move on to Dinesh's. I find it incredibly disappointing that Cupertino Sunnyvale League of Women Voters has issued an extremely questionable statement about Cupertino's lobbying ordinance. It is exactly the same as Santa Clara's and San Jose's, and their leagues aren't suing them. I've no, I've, I've no who, sorry, I've no who within the ranks of their, I have no idea who within the ranks of their organization promoted this, but why wouldn't the public want lobbying organizations to file with the city, nonprofit or otherwise? It's not about silencing anyone, and we are all free to speak or write at orals. The question begs, why wouldn't we want transparency in Cupertino? It's no surprise that our residents who are paying attention have the impression that some of our LWVs are more active members that have strong development interests when they should be impartial. That distrust began with the League of Women Voters promulgation of the false narrative that the Citizens Measure C initiative would create three-story houses all over Cupertino, despite that they were persistently informed that it was basically impossible because of floor area height ratios in our city. Our comment cards, as such, were completely ignored at the League of Women Voter forums. Shortly after the elections, one of the Valcos' lead architects, Craig Bachelor, bragged that he was responsible for the false claim. His wife, an active league member, was also a Valco architect. In May of 2018, the Cupertino Sunnyvale League of Women Voters stunned residents by doing their own Valco forum. Since when does the League of Women Voters get involved in developer issues? It got worse at the 2020 Council Candidate Forum, where questions smacked of taking pokes at our resident-centric candidates, and it appeared to come straight from the mouth of one of their members, who is Valco's biggest full-time supporter. Their apparent candidate of choice was an League of Women Voter Board of Director-at-Large and is a diehard Valco supporter. Isn't the league's purpose to maintain, remain impartial, but also to apprise the public of any factual and measurable negative impacts? Remember that Valco and the rise will leave Cupertino short housing for about 4,000 new workers, a very serious issue considering our current housing crisis and RENA issues. Many who watched were incensed. The elephant in the room is that one of the league's very active members is also the editor and writer of the self-proclaimed Cupertino newspaper, Cupertino Matters, which appears to be dedicated to the glorification of Alco and Main Street alongside weekly smears and criticisms of our city council, minus their favorite. That same person is also a regular fixture at our council orals on Nextdoor and anywhere else she can spew her negative council narrative at a full-time, as a full-time job to make it look like a majority resident, despite that this group is only a small handful of dissenters. Residents have grown weary of the constant negative fodder, and the uninformed have the right to know. Is it any wonder why our city would create a lobbying ordinance? So why would our local League of Women Voters object to an ordinance that brings transparency to the table unless it is
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and thank you, Dinesh, for the email comment. And we are now on to item number two on our agenda. This falls under reports by council and staff. Item number two's subject is brief reports on councilmember activities and brief announcements. Our last regular meeting was scheduled on July 5. However, that fell after the Monday, July 4 holiday, and so we held a special meeting on July 7. And so these councilmember activities, about a minute each is what we allocated for this, is just a brief update on our outside activities, not the committee appointments, but outside activities since July 7, which is when we had our special meeting, which essentially took the place of our July 5 meeting. And so are there any councilmembers that would like to provide those updates? Let me go by a show of hands, either live or on Zoom. I actually really appreciate the head shaking because we do have a very full agenda tonight. Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll be very brief. On July 9, I think a few of us, councilmember, Vice Mayor Chow, and then Mayor Paul, we all went to the opening ceremony of the 38th Taiwanese and Chinese athletic tournament. It is yearly event, and they haven't done it for two years, so it was, they are really excited, and it was a really great way to get people together with athletic tournaments. So the next day, I went to Cupertino High School and attended their championship game with the basketball game. It was really great. And I just think this is, these are great events to put, to get our residents together and to get out of COVID and be part of healthy and fellowship activities. So another one I want to advocate is on July 23, between 3 to 10 p.m. at Deans College, there is going to be a night market that came back after two years. We haven't done it. It is hosted by the American, Asian-American Business Chamber, and we have performances from all the way from 3 p.m. to 10 p.m., and over 25 group chats. So please do come out on Saturday, September 23, between 3 to 10 p.m. at the Deans College. It's going to be a great event, performances, food, and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. And let's go on to any other members of council that would like to provide updates since July 9. Councilmember Wei, I think you pretty much have it. Let me look around on the dais. So thank you very much. Let's go on to item number three, which is report on committee assignments. Every year, at the end of the calendar year in December, Cupertino assigns committee assignments to the various members of the council. And so as an elected official in the city of Cupertino, we're tasked with representing the city in various other forums, such as the Library Joint Powers Authority, the Water Commission, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're going to go ahead and provide a couple of minutes for each councilmember to provide their updates on our regular committee assignments for this year. And so let me look around and also look on Zoom to see if there are any hands raised with regard to the updates. And just a caveat on that, July does tend to be a little bit quieter with regard to some of these committee assignments, because most jurisdictions are taking a bit of a break for July. I do see Vice Mayor Chow has a hand raised in Zoom, and so welcome, Vice Mayor Chow.
So on the 18th, we had a Legislative Review Committee meeting. One item is funding requests to the legislators. We invited one representative from each of the office, Tara from Dinesh Cortez's office, and Patrick Aaron from Assemblymember Evan Low's office, to explain to us the request process so that we can get district funding. This year, we were, because of the surplus, we got funding for $5.5 million for McLaren Road Bridge and $1 million for the alternative playground. And for the submission to Cortez's office, it didn't get in there in time. However, they worked with the staff to get even more state funding directly from the State Transportation Agency of, I think, over $8 million for the Via Shuttle, so we can expand that to Santa Clara. And we hope to continue, so that we hope to understand process so that next year we get, can discuss the funding request early. Another item is property tax, that we are, we try to get understanding, why Cupertino actually get much less property tax on every dollar of property tax we get. We only get 7% when some other cities, such as Oakland, they get 40%. So we will continue this discussion next time on September 12, hopefully to compare between cities, to see whether we could use this to advocate for a better, fair distribution for Cupertino. Then, next meeting will be September 12.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow, and much appreciations for all the very detail-oriented and intensive and broad-based work that you and our Councilmember Moore are doing on the LRC and have done for a couple of years. I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised, and so Councilmember Moore, you'll go next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you to Vice Mayor for requesting that we had representatives from Assemblymember Lowe's and Senator Cortez's office visit with us, and that we received the budget request letters that were from the city. And I think that when we get to the future agenda-setting item, that we might want to look at the grant funding communication that we have within the city, because one of the items, for instance, was a budget request to expand the fiber network for $9 million, which was news to us. So I don't think, and this is actually following up on a comment from the public, from Rhoda, because I believe she had two of the letters there, and we need to see a little bit more transparency and have some more communication about these large projects, infrastructure improvements that we're needing. One positive note regarding plastics is on June 30, 2022, Governor Newsom signed SB 54 requiring all the packaging in the state to be recyclable or compostable by 2032, cutting plastic packaging by 25% in 10 years, and requiring 65% of all single-use plastic packaging to be recycled in the same timeframe. This is the most significant overhaul of California's plastics and packaging recycling policy in history, and goes further than any other state on cutting plastics production at the source. We, Cupertino, we, from the LRC, we supported the Plastics Initiative, and that Plastics Initiative was going to be on the ballot. SB 54 had some changes made to it, and the proponents of the initiative withdrew it when they found the SB 54 changes were to their liking. So this is really good news and very helpful. So I wanted everybody to know that. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. I don't see any other hands raised, and so I'll just give a couple of brief reports. I'm the VTA representative to the board of that organization of the West Valley Cities, comprised of us, Campbell, Saratoga, Monteserino, as well as Los Gatos. We had a very brief special meeting in July. Generally, VTA is on break for most of their board and committees during the month of July, to the extent possible. But we had a very brief special meeting in order to extend out the allowances to have remote meetings for this time. And so we are also looking to get member training, and so there's an opportunity for certification by APTA in a seminar, which I'll be attending at the end of this month. There was a little bit of discussion, because this is taking place in Salt Lake City, which is, of course, in Utah. The state of California actually has some prohibitions against traveling to certain states using state funding. And so we were going over some of the pros and cons, and with regard to the issue of LGBTQ plus rights, that is the genesis of that prohibition from the state of California. However, this is using internal VTA funding. And also, just after weighing a lot of the considerations, I've always been a very significant and large proponent of LGBTQ plus rights, and you know, I weighed it and really thought that it's very important to be able to have that show of support. But at the same time, I think that also with regard to having sufficient training for the board members of local agencies, such as the transportation and congestion relief and transit agency, you know, goings-on within our county, it's important to be able to have that type of training. So I will be attending that in Salt Lake City at the end of the month. With regard to the other assignment that I had, we have a monthly meeting of the mayors and commissioners, representatives from each of the commissions. That's going really well. We actually had a full house, so thank you to each and every one of our commissions and the Audit Committee for sending a representative. It was a nice conversation. It's an hour-long conversation, and Vice Mayor Chow has very graciously agreed to essentially split duties with me this year. And so for the odd months, July is an odd month. I'm taking the duty there, and Vice Mayor Chow is taking the even months. And so she had June, and we'll have August, and I'll take September and November. And so things are going really positively in our city, across the whole spectrum of activity. As you can well know, if you look at our commissions, they cover just so much that's going on in our city. They did so through the pandemic and are doing so now, and so I'm really proud to be able to report out that those activities are continuing and really cover the entire spectrum of residential activity and our various outreaches to, you know, the regional issues. And they mirror pretty well the work plan as well. So if you look at the work plan, you can track it with a lot of the various priorities of our commissions and committees. So that'll be my report for item number three. We'll go on to item number four, which is going to be report on subcommittee assignments. And again, given the relatively brief turnaround since the 12 days we had our special meeting taking place of our regular meeting, I wouldn't expect to see too many, if any, subcommittee assignment report-outs. But I do see Vice Mayor Chow with a hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to report out on any of the subcommittees that we're assigned to?
Just that the CEP committee that was canceled in May, I think, was finally rescheduled. It will be next Monday at 11 o'clock.
Okay, very good.
5/15, yeah.
Wonderful. And Vice Mayor Chow, where is that meeting taking place?
A virtual meeting.
Oh, it's a virtual meeting? Okay, very good. Okay. So look out for the notice, and it'll be available on Zoom. So let's go on to
And that's the Community Engagement Plan Committee for the housing element, in case people don't know what CEP is.
Right, exactly. Thank you for spelling out that acronym. And maybe let's remind the members of the public, we also have another outreach for the housing element as well. I believe that's next week. Perhaps either yourself or our city attorney can remind people of what day and time that is going to be.
That's actually tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, okay.
And I don't have the time at the tip of my tongue.
Okay, okay. Well, if anyone has that handy off the top of their head, I think that was in the evening.
That's from 6:30 to 8.
Okay, 6:30 to 8, and here in community hall, is that correct?
Or That will also be a virtual event.
Oh, all virtual? So there's no live component to it as Oh, all virtual, so there's no live component to it as well. Okay, okay, great. So you can pull the agenda from our various agendas online at Legistar. And so let's go ahead and move on to item number, I believe we're on four, so this should be five. We have our city manager update, item number five. And coming to us from Zoom is Diane Thompson, our acting city manager. Welcome, Diane. Would you like to provide the update for item number five?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul, and good evening, council. I do have a few items to report to you. First of all, since it's Parks and Rec Month, I'd like to give kudos to our Parks and Rec staff, who did a fabulous job during the pandemic of being creative and just really dedicated employees to continue to bring programs to our community, even with all of the changes that we had. And I also want to recognize our acting director of Park and Rec, Rochelle Sander, for stepping up during this time period. We do not have a permanent director. We have a few announcements from our Park and Rec Department. The Environmental Education Center at McClellan Ranch Preserve has resumed open house hours on Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And for more information, please visit Cupertino.org/McLellanRanch. Also, on July 23rd to 24th, the Cupertino Campout, a very popular event, is returning to Creekside Park. And for more information on that, you can go to the website at Cupertino.org/campout. Shakespeare in the Park begins July 23rd at Memorial Park Amphitheater, and the shows are from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And lastly, from that department, Movies in the Park will return Friday nights in August at Creekside Park. For more information on both events, visit Cupertino.org/recreation. And then I also wanted to let the council know about the Homestead De Anza Traffic Signal Upgrade Project. That project will begin on August 1st and is scheduled to be completed September 5th. The project will include upgrading the traffic signal poles to enhance visibility at the intersection, increasing safety for our community. This intersection is one of the busiest in the city and has had the highest accident rate. During construction, there will be intermittent lane closures, as you might expect, and some delays for vehicles, bikes, and pedestrian traffic. The staff have coordinated with the city of Sunnyvale, and so Sunnyvale is aware of the project. More information is available on the project website, and inquiries can be made to Public Works through Cupertino 311. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks very much, Diane. And typically, we don't take questions on the reports, and so we'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. That is our consent calendar items. Those are items number six through 24. And so what we'll do first, per our usual practice, is go to our members of the public and ask if there are any members of the public that have a request to pull any of the items on our consent calendar. Again, that's items six through 24. I don't see any hands raised from the public, and so let me take it back to council at this time. Would anyone from our city council like to pull any of the items from six through 24 from the consent calendar? And I see a hand raised on the dais from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, did you have items on consent that you would like to pull?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. I might be able to get an answer from staff. I'm inclined to pull items 15 through 18, and the reason being is that it, and it kind of ties into a later agenda item, so it's a little bit confusing. But Agenda Item 31 refers to these items going to, tentatively going to the Audit Committee next Monday. So I'm thinking we want to perhaps wait, because it's showing that it, so I'm not really sure procedurally what to do here. It said that if we approve item, the suggestion in 31, we would be reviewing these items on August 16th, if I'm understanding this, the order of operations here correctly.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, I think we probably need a little bit more context publicly in order to get to this question that you're raising. So you had indicated something other than items 15 through 18 that you wanted to pull. What item or items?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I, yeah, I think we better just pull these, pull them, and I know that we had a postponement, but when I'm reading the details of 31, I think we might actually want to postpone these items after we've pulled them, so.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so you don't have any additional items other than 15 through 18 to pull, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. So let's do this. I don't see any further hands raised from council. So consent calendar is six through 24. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items six through 14, as well as 19 through 24, as recommended in the agenda? And so I see a head nod from Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie?
So moved.
Would anyone like to second that motion? Councilmember Moore?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I don't see any further hands raised. This, again, is on consent calendar items six through 14 and 19 through 24, based upon the recommended action in the agenda. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so let's go on to items 15 through 18. It looks like we might be able to address these in a batch, so let's go ahead, and let me just provide that context, because I didn't have that polled right in front of me at the time. So items 15 through 18 are the accounts payable for the weeks ending June 6th, June 13th, June 20th, and June 27th, respectively, of this year. And so Councilmember Moore, I think connecting that with what you were talking about and connecting with item number 31...
Five, 35.
Oh, 35, okay. With item number 35, I think you had mentioned that you might be amenable to postponing the item until later date. So let's go to any member of staff that would like to speak on these concerns. And again, these are the accounts payable from our recent weeks ending June 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th. Would anyone from staff like to speak to any of these thoughts or the request potentially to postpone the item? And I'll go by a show of hands here. Diane, you have your microphone on.
Yes, what I would do is ask Liz Cook, who is our interim finance manager, if she has a comment on these items and might be able to answer your questions. And I guess the real question is, can we postpone these items?
Okay, very good. Thank you, Diane. And while Liz, I haven't had a chance to meet you formally, and so, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. And I guess this is your first initiation into the role of communicating with the public in Cupertino. So how about it? Do we have any issues with potentially postponing these four items to a future council meeting?
I love it. Let's start with a question, right? Nothing like indoctrination for the new person, correct?
Indeed, here you go.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Paul and council members. No, at this point in time, there is no issue with that. We are well-prepared for item number 35. Should that be approved, the Audit Committee that will be next Monday will also include these accounts payable reports, and then we'll be able to bring them back to the city council.
Okay, sounds like clarity and conciseness, and that's wonderful. Good initiation in our city. So let's go to the dais again. Councilmember Moore, did you want to bring that motion to postpone items 15 through 18 to a future council meeting?
I'm so moved.
Okay, would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? I see a hand raised on the dais from Councilmember Willie.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on items 15 through 18, and I don't see any further hands raised. Madam City Clerk, could you take a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're just breaking land speed records here. We are on the second reading of ordinances. This is item 25. This is consider conducting the second reading of ordinance number 22-2241, which relates to a name change for the Fine Arts Commission. And so let us go ahead. I'm assuming that there's not much to present, if anything at all, because it's fairly self-explanatory. We've had the initial reading, and this is the second reading. Nothing changed during the time between the first reading and second reading. And so I don't see any hands raised with regard to that. And so why don't we have any public comment at this time? I don't see any hands raised from the public. I'll go back to the dais. If there's any request for a motion at this time on the second reading of the Fine Arts Commission name change, I would be happy to entertain that motion. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I believe it would be that I move that ordinance number 22-2241 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof. And I move that ordinance number 22-2241 be enacted.
Okay, wonderful omnibus motion there. Would anyone like to second that motion? Councilmember Way, you have your hand raised.
I'll second it.
Okay, wonderful. Madam City Clerk, could you conduct the second reading of this ordinance, please?
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 22-2241, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter 2.80 in sections 19.102.040, 19.148.030, 19.148.050, 19.148.060, and 19.148.090 to adopt a name change for Finance, Fine Arts Commission to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And seeing as to how we have that motion, that will effectuate both the second reading and the enactment, and no other hands raised, although I saw an indication from our city attorney. Did you want to say anything?
You clarified for the record that there are no members of the public that wish to comment on this second reading.
That's correct. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. And so that's still being the case, and no hands raised from dais. Let us go ahead and conduct a roll call vote on the second reading and enactment of the ordinance. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so we're on to item number 26. This is the consideration of the second reading for municipal code amendments codifying the Economic Development Committee. And so let me see whether there are any changes. Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager, I see that your camera is on. However, I think we're in a very similar stead with the prior item in that we're conducting second reading and no changes have been made from first reading to second reading. Feel free to correct me if that's incorrect. You're nodding, so I'm going to go ahead and take that as an affirmative. I don't see any hands raised from members of the public to speak to this second reading. And so let me take this back to the dais, and Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised. Would you like to bring forward a motion with regard to the second reading and enactment of this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor Paul, I move that ordinance number 22-2240 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof. And I move that ordinance number 22-2240 be enacted.
Would anyone like to second this motion? I see a hand raised from Councilmember Willie.
Second.
Very good. I don't see further hands raised at this point. So Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the second reading of ordinance 22-2240? Thank you.
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 22-2240, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, adding Chapter 2.96 of Title II, Administration and Personnel to Codify the Economic Development Committee. And did you also want to find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA?
Let me go ahead and go to the movement. Madam Councilmember Moore, would you like to add that to your motion?
Please do, thank you.
And the second of the motion, Councilmember Willie, are you amenable to adding that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So that the SEQA material is added, so let us go ahead and go, I'll go back to the members of the public in case there are anybody, are there any people who want to comment on this? I don't see any hands raised. We'll go back to the dais and the Zoom function for the council members attending via video. I don't see any hands raised there either. And so Madam City Clerk, could you please take a roll call vote on this omnibus motion for the second reading of the ordinance as well as enactment?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow? Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so we are on to our public hearings on item 27. Does anyone want to take a break at this time? I know that it is good to take a few minutes every hour. We're doing really well on time. If I don't see any hands raised, we'll go ahead to, oh, I see a hand raised from Councilmember Way. Did you want to take a, perhaps a five-minute break at this time, Councilmember Way? Okay, I will lip read. You muted mid-sentence there, but I will go ahead and take that five-minute break. It is 7:51, just turned 7:51. We'll return at 7:56. We'll see you in a few. Starting back up. And I hit the wrong button. Okay, so let us go ahead and start back up with the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council on July 19th. We are on public hearings, item number 27. The subject has to do with weed abatement, brush abatement. And so the full subject is hearing to consider the approval of lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels resulting from abatement of public nuisance, weeds under brush, for the annual weed and brush abatement programs and accompanying budget modification request. And so there are a few recommended actions on the agenda. They include conducting the public hearing regarding the same, adopting a resolution, which is 22-089, approving the lien assessment and collection of fees, and also approving for the third item, or for the third recommended action, rather, a budget modification, which is enumerated 2223-221, increasing the appropriation by $1,579 in the city manager department, City Clerk's division. And so the presenter for this item is going to be our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, would you like to present the item for 27?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will attempt to share my screen. I believe you can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this, just trying to, oh, there we go, okay. So the lien assessment and collection process does include both the weed and brush abatement programs. The programs are in place to work with property owners to ensure the removal of brush, dry weeds, and dead vegetation before the start of the fire season. Only properties that have not met the requirements of the two programs are being assessed today. The charges include work that are performed by county contractors to abate properties. The county also has inspection and administrative fees, and these assessments will be included on the property owner tax bill as a special assessment. So the 2022 county fees include the initial inspection, which costs $91, $91, and then the first and second administrative fees for $505 and $858. 100% of the contractor invoice fees would be transferred to the parcel owner. So the, as part of the past inspection process, the city council actually approved a modification. The city now pays the initial inspection fee for properties that pass their inspection by the April 30 deadline. And it is funded by the general fund for an ongoing $8,886 budget appropriation. On July 6th, the county provided the full assessment report, which is actually broken down into two different reports. So the past inspection report for this year includes 115 parcels for a total of $10,465. That is $1,579 over the budget appropriation. So we will be requesting an additional $1,579 to meet the cost to cover those past inspection parcels. Now, the assessment report for failed properties, which is the other half of the full assessment report, that is what you are considering today for the assessments. There are 22 parcels on that report. The, this failed inspection report, as well as the hearing notice, was mailed to parcel owners on July 7 by the city clerk's office. And so your recommended action before you tonight is to conduct the hearing to consider objections from property owners that are on the assessment report for failed inspections, to adopt Resolution Number 22-089, approving the lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels, and also to approve a budget modification for increasing the appropriation for, by $1,570 to cover the past inspection costs to... the, uh, to cover the past inspection costs to, um, pay the county. And that is all.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? And so, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll wait, um, uh, half a minute or so, so that people can, um, have sufficient amounts of time to, so indicate. Um, and during that time, I'll go ahead and repeat that, uh, we'll go to the Zoom function first, so if you have your hand raised, we'll call you in first. Um, and we also have the ability to fill out a blue card, we're live in Community Hall, um, and also to, uh, email our city clerk at cityclerkone word at Cupertino dot org if you want to speak to this item. Um, and because we don't have any hands raised on Zoom, I'll go ahead and extend this out for, uh, another minute or so, in case anyone wanted to speak on this item through, uh, emailing our city clerk, for instance, or, um, submitting a blue card.
And Mayor Paul?
And yes.
Very sorry to interrupt, I forgot to mention that, um, Mo Kumari, who is the weed abatement program manager, he is on hand to answer any of your questions.
Wonderful, thank you. I, I didn't want to embarrass Mo, I, I didn't see her, his name here, uh, but I'm really happy that he, uh, is here, just like in all the other, uh, similar hearings in my time on council for the last seven and a half years. So, welcome, Mo, great to, um, great to have you here. So, I, I don't see any, uh, hands raised in Zoom, and Madam City Clerk, I take it that you didn't get any of the emails either, is that correct?
No, I did not, Mayor.
Okay, and I'm assuming there are no blue cards, is that a?
No blue cards.
Correct assumption, okay. Well, let's go ahead and close out the public hearing. Uh, we have conducted it, there's been an opportunity for the public to speak. And so, let us go ahead and bring this back to the dais. Uh, I'll remind our city council that we have a recommended action that is three parts. If you would like to move the recommended action for consideration by council, I've already, um, alluded to it, uh, and summarized it, you can simply, uh, move the recommended action on the, um, on the agenda. And so, would anyone like to do that? I see a smile, let, let me go to my, uh, my Zoom attendees first, I, I see one hand raised, and so, Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to move the recommended action?
Actually, I think I should recuse myself.
Okay, let's, let's, let's.
My property is on the past inspection.
The past inspection list? Okay, let's, let's do this. Um, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, for pointing that out.
It has to do with the budget, so I think I should recuse.
Okay, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Let, let me go to our city attorney, Chris, do we need to have a recusal from Vice Mayor Chow on this item?
Uh, it's, it's, it's not legally required because, uh, her, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Chow's property is not being assessed. So she, so she is not, she, she is not, she does not have a, a conflict with respect to this vote that you're taking tonight.
Got it. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you're in the clear. So, would you like to move the recommended action?
Um, okay.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow moves, do we have a second? Uh, Councilmember Way is, uh, raising a hand in Zoom. You second, okay, great. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, it is only eight oh four P M., and we're on item number twenty-seven.
I have a comment.
And I see, uh, a hand raised from the dais, from Councilmember Moore, as well as from Councilmember Willie, so let's go to Councilmember Moore first for any comments, um, and then Councilmember Willie.
Okay, just a, a quick comment, uh, it's great to see that we only have, uh, twenty-two on the fail list and that our list has dropped by so many numbers this time, I, I think that's, that's, that's good news for, for the community. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore, and I, um, wholeheartedly echo that sentiment as well, as I'm sure all of your colleagues do. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I have a question.
Uh, turn your mic.
Have a question, maybe the city clerk could put that one slide on one-thirty-seven, one-fifteen, and twenty-two. Just kinda helps with the, uh, understanding.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Willie, and Madam City Clerk is sharing her screen?
Which slide was that?
The table with the one-thirty-seven parcels, one-fifteen.
That looks like the one.
Yeah, there you go there. And so, just a little clarification on this, when we say the assessment report full, one-thirty-seven parcels versus past inspections, one-fifteen, so does the one-thirty-seven mean that that's the one that has everything that has been on the list multiple years because they originally failed?
Uh, I will let Mo answer that question.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk, and Mo, welcome.
The hundred and thirty-seven is the number of parcels that were approved through the commencement hearing that were, would be considered active this year for us to inspect and abate should the property owners not comply. Since a hundred and fifteen parcels did comply, most of those weren't necessary for us to do that.
So, so my question was, though, is that, uh, I'm thinking that those were ones that maybe failed a couple years ago, and that they're on that list for three years?
Some of them would be, yes. The policy is that unless a par- uh, unless the property owner builds a landscape sufficient to remove the threat, a property remains on the program until it demonstrates three consecutive years of voluntary compliance.
Great, thank you, and so, I think I'm understanding that now. I just wanted to be sure, you know, that when we move on to the next item, that we didn't, um, confuse this. So, for those previous, uh, uh, properties, parcels, and they, they're on the list for three years, but they have done the correction, so that's why we wouldn't be hearing from them tonight, saying, you know, um, hey, I'm concerned, you know, I'm ta- trying to take care of this. That's kinda where my concern is, is that we didn't hear anybody come to speak tonight, you know, on behalf of their property and trying to take care of it. And so, when I see the number one-thirty-seven, oh, I thought, you know, it's usually a small percentage, but you know, four, five, or ten people might want to come and speak, and then the one-fifteen, okay, so, those ones were, uh, all compliant, again, some of those are historical versus first time, and that left twenty-two parcels that did get inspected this year, that were not compliant this year. And none of the property owners, and again, this is clarification, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, n- of those twenty-two that are essentially gonna get fined, and either they take care of it, or, uh, you are going to actively have a contractor go out and take care of it, and those twenty-two, none of them came to let us know that they're trying to take care of it or doing things like that. So, that, all being wrapped up, we just then need to move the motion that's been put forward. Have I characterized, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie, and I have a very brief comment. I, I think that we had, uh, an incredibly good process. Um, this has not always been a, uh, really quick, uh, kind of conversation, but, uh, as we all know, um, we have a lot of, uh, fire hazards these days, climate change is real, we have, you know, a lot of safety issues that we need to address. And, uh, at the same time, we do want to be able to be, uh, fair and compassionate to, um, our residents, especially the ones who promptly comply. And so, um, through a lot of discussion, you know, over the course of the years, we decided to go ahead and, uh, allocate some money to go ahead and say, hey, you know, if you, uh, got the notice and you comply, you know, promptly, we're gonna go ahead and cover that. And so, it's not a huge amount of money, it's some eight thousand, some odd dollars, but we need another fifteen hundred, uh, this year. And so, I'm really proud that we, as a council, have really, really granularly looked at these types of things, you know, from the perspective of efficacy and, and equity, and we're at the time, uh, at this point right now, because of that work, you know, because of that, uh, really thoughtful detail-oriented work that we, um, effectuated. So, uh, thanks very much, uh, again, Mr. Kumari, great to see you again, and so, I don't see any hands raised, uh, further. Uh, Vice Mayor, actually, you have your hand raised, did you want to, um, speak, uh, on this item before we went ahead and voted on the motion that's on the table?
Yeah, I do have a question for Mo. We received an email from a resident who's, uh, mentioned that he saw a lot of weed along Stevens Creek Trail, and in those open space area, um, so he is concerned about fire hazard there. So, for those kind of properties, who is responsible for checking, uh, those potential fire hazard? Um, could be public agency, but could be private, but more, uh, you know, open space area or trails?
Okay.
If, if it's private, then we can address it. If it's public, then the agency that owns it would have to address it, but if they're forwarded to me, I can get to the proper agency to ensure that they're aware of it.
So, they, if a resident who noticed a potential hazard can contact your, your office, how do they contact you?
Uh, they can go through our website and, uh, enter, uh, enter their information on a, a report form we have there, but they can also call our phone number, four-zero-eight-eight-two-eight uh, three-one-four-five, and they can leave a message for us or talk to somebody and, uh, give us all the information, and then we'll address it, again, either ourselves or move it to the appropriate agency so that they can address it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thanks you, uh, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, as well as, uh, Mo, really appreciate it. And so, Madam City Clerk, um, could you please take a roll call vote for the motion that's on the dais now?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Very good, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We are on to item number twenty-eight. However, per the motion that was on our, um, postponements and orders of the day, we will go ahead and, uh, hold item twenty-eight in advance and do a time check after each of the other items, uh, until we hit, uh, nine o'clock or later. So, we are now on item twenty-nine. The subject is to consider a proposed second amendment to the employment agreement for the city attorney increasing the annual salary to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars effective July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and to consider proposed amendments to the appointed employees' compensation program and related, uh, budget modifications. Uh, per, uh, per, per, per legal requirement, I am gonna go ahead and read, uh, statements into the record, and so, in accordance with Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-three-C-three, I am providing an oral summary of the recommended action. The item before the council tonight is to revise the current employment agreement for the city attorney, uh, position effective July twenty eighth, uh, twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The proposed base compensation is increased to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars effective July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. The total annual compensation is four-hundred-and-five thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars inclusive of fringe benefits, payroll taxes, and retirement contributions. Additional details regarding this item are set forth in the agenda and resolution associated with this item. And so, I take it that there is, um, no staff report to present, although it does say the presenter is, uh, Diane Thompson, our acting city manager, um, but I believe that that should be the pertinent information, and Diane, if you wanted to, uh, speak to the item, uh, further, please feel free to, uh, do so. Uh, I see your head was kinda nodding, so, if you wanted to speak to that, uh, please, uh, feel free to do that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul, I would like, um, to make a couple comments. Um, in terms of the, um, fiscal impact for this item, a budget amendment is included, um, and would be required to account for increased cost by about twenty-four thousand. And I think you covered everything else that needs to be said, except that I wanted to take this opportunity to say that, um, during the last year, when we've had in-house legal, um, legal services, it has been an absolute delight to work with city attorney Chris Jensen, as well as deputy city attorney Michael Wu, and our legal services manager, Arisalei Alejandre, that having, um, this in-house legal team has been fantastic.
Okay, well, thank you very much, um, Madam Acting Sitting, uh, Manager, and we will go ahead and bring this to our members of the public prior to bringing it back to council, uh, for their, uh, employment decision, as well as, uh, potential effectuation of it. So, Jennifer, we have your hand raised in Zoom, and so, uh, you'll have three minutes, and if any other member of the public wants to raise their, uh, hand, and Jennifer has actually lowered her hand at this point, and so, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, and somehow, oh no, she's still there on Zoom, and so, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, not call Jennifer, unless Jennifer, you actually did want to be called on, in which case I'll unmute your microphone. Um, but at this point, I'll remind our members of the public that there are, uh, two other ways to be recognized to speak on an item, and that is to fill out a blue card live or to email our city clerk at cityclerk@cupertino.org, that's one word, city clerk. Um, I don't see any further hands raised, and Madam City Clerk, did there, um, have any, were there any blue cards from members of the public for this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and during this time, have, uh, any members of the public emailed you on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, very good, uh, so, let's go ahead and return this to, uh, the dais with the members of our city council. Uh, would anyone like to move the recommended action of item number twenty-nine? I see, um, Councilmember Moore has a hand raised, Councilmember Moore?
So moved.
Okay, would anyone like to second? I do see, I, I, there are a couple, actually, I, I saw Vice Mayor Chow, and then a hand raised from Councilmember Willie, and then a hand raised from Councilmember Way. Um, so, let me go ahead, let me go to Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, would you like to second before, um, and if you don't want to, I'll go. You would? Okay, very good. Okay, very good, we have a, a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Vice Mayor Chow to move the recommended action on this item number twenty-nine. Would anyone like to speak to this item before we go ahead and, uh, and so, Councilmember Willie, since, uh, you, uh, got beaten to the draw with regard to, uh, the, uh, the seconding, would you like to speak on this item first?
Sure. I'll just make a comment, I'll second our city manager's, uh, comments. Chris, thank you very much. What I, what I feel you've done to bring the city attorney function back in-house, getting a team together with Michael, working with Asaleas, it sure seems to have gone flawless, and we really appreciate your effort, so, thank you.
So, thank you, Councilmember, excuse me, thank you, Councilmember Willie.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie, and thank you, Chris. Uh, anyone else, um, like to comment on this? I, I do see two hands raised in Zoom, Councilmember Moore, did you want to comment as well? I'm actually gonna go to Zoom first, but I just wanted to, yeah, all right, so we have, um, let's go to Councilmember Way, followed by the Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, um, yes, um, I just wanna say, it's so great to have, um, Chris, and also, um, you know, to bring Michael into our city and really take care of the, not just the legal issues, but also a lot of, um, you know, our questions are answered, and Chris is always so, uh, knowledgeable and also, uh, timely, and so, I just really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Way, next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, um, yeah, I'd like to say that it's really delightful to work with Chris, and, uh, and I always ask a lot of questions, I try to look at different angles, and then he has always been very, very passionate, being very patient with me, and giving me, oh, always, um, have, um, be very responsive, and I have heard that Planning Commission is getting great support from Michael Wu also, so we are, we, we really thank you for your service, and I want to add that when I joined the council in two thousand nineteen, um, the more experienced the council member at the time, um, was transitioning, and they just fired the, or, or the previous city attorney left for, for whatever reason, and then they wanted to try a contract attorney, so we contracted with Shun Mahaly, a very well-respected firm, to try it out. They do provide city attorney service to many different cities. So, we had, uh, Heather Minner, and she is wonderful, however, every minute we consult her, it's dollars, clink, 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 and, uh, it, it, it adds up, and we find out it really is not economically feasible for the city, and then we moved them to still have an in-house attorney. So, I think it has worked out, that we tried contract attorney, it doesn't really fit Cupertino, since we do have many issues, we need to be able to consult our city attorney in, often, so it has worked out, and we are so lucky to have, uh, Chris and Michael on our team, and then, uh, the legislative, uh, oh, what's her name? Yeah, okay, so thank you, I, I just wonderful, we have a great team.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and we will go back to dais to Councilmember Moore.
Gosh, I'm, I'm afraid, I'm afraid we might lose our, our city attorney with all this, the, the glowing comments, um, so don't go anywhere. Okay, I, I've really appreciated the, the excellent guidance that we've been receiving, and I, I, bringing in, uh, Michael Wu, uh, on, with the contract expertise is really helpful, and, uh, I, I don't know if, if everyone knows that, um, our, our city attorney is also, uh, extremely well-versed in, in environmental issues, and, um, I've been, uh, continually impressed, uh, whenever I ask a question regarding a, a wide-ranging, uh, amount of topics, that there- that there, there seems to always be a ready answer, um, which is uh, it's, it's quite, quite astonishing. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, Chris, did you want to say something before we uh?
No, uh, no, thank you, thank you. So really thank you for all the kind words. It's, it's, it's a little bit too much. Um, I, I did want to echo what, you know, a number of other people have mentioned. And that's, you know, our, our assistant city attorney, Michael Wu, and our legal services manager, Arisalei Alejandre, are really just critical to the function of our office. And, you know, we wouldn't be able to provide this service to council and commissions and staff without them. So I just wanted to make sure to, to thank them, um, you know, tonight as well. So it's, you know, a small group, but I think we're really effective. And we look, I'll look forward to continuing to work with all of you.
Great, wonderful. Well, I, I don't want to embarrass Chris any further. I, of course, echo the sentiments uh, of everyone. Um, you know, w- with regard to um, you know, the, the history of the office, um, I, I think a lot of people have um, you know, various perspectives on it. But, you know, my own is that we have uh, made good decisions along the way. Uh, and uh, speaking of Arisalei, Chris, uh, I, I, I think that point of continuity has been uh, incredibly uh, useful for us. Uh, from, from Randy Hohm, uh, where uh, she was um, in the city attorney's office, uh, back when we had another uh, separate city attorney's office uh, across the way over there, uh, all the way to um, Heather Minner with Shumahali, and then to yourself. Uh, there's just been incredible support. And so, I want to be able to uh, affirm the notion that um, you know, on council, everyone thinks that you're an excellent city attorney. I, I knew right away, frankly, I mean, when, when I saw your background, um, that, that you could be an extraordinary uh, generational pick at the city attorney's um, you know, level. And so, um, that's certainly borne itself out. And uh, I think that um, you know, time will uh, certainly prove the, the fact that this uh, council uh, has made some, some, some really excellent um, you know, steering choices with regard to the community. Um, so uh, with that, I'll go ahead and uh, ask that we uh, take a, a vote. Uh, Vice Mayor, I do see that your, your hand is raised. Um, but uh, you are now lowered, uh, lowering it, so thank you very much uh, for that. We've all kind of spoken our perspective in peace on, on this. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so, a time check, we're at eight twenty-four. Let us go to item number thirty now. The subject here, and again, we are uh, still on ordinances and action items. Uh, this should be an action item. The subject here on item thirty is to consider adopting a position on Senate Bill one three three eight. That was brought forward by Senator Umberg, the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment, also known as CARE Court Program. And so, I see that the presenter for this item is Astrid Robles, our acting assistant to the city manager. Uh, Astrid, would you like to provide the uh, presentation uh, from staff on this item? Welcome.
Yep. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Astrid Robles, and I'm here to present on Senate Bill thirteen thirty-eight. I do have a short presentation prepared, so I will share my screen. Hopefully, everyone can see that.
Yes, it's visible. Thank you.
Okay, so um, Senate Bill thirteen thirty-eight is authored by Senators Umberg and Eggman and is sponsored by Governor Newsom. It is known as the CARE Court, or the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment CARE Court, which established the CARE Court Program. This program would allow civil courts to order those suffering from certain mental illnesses into a treatment program at the community level. Under the bill, a broad range of individuals, including family members, behavioral health professionals, and first responders with knowledge of the person, can petition the civil court to have a person suffering from severe mental illness and a current diagnosis of schizophrenia spectrum or other psychotic disorder, ordered into either a voluntary care agreement or a court-ordered treatment plan for one year, or if renewed, two years. The state budget has dedicated two point two billion dollars to help expand mental health, housing, and services across California, including the CARE Court Program. On June twentieth, the governor announced five hundred and eighteen point five million dollars in grants to counties, which includes fifty-four million dollars for Santa Clara County, to help provide services and housing options to persons with severe mental illness or substance abuse problems, including those who are unhoused. The Legislative Review Committee considered this bill on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The LRC voted to take a watch position and unanimously recommended that the full council consider a position on this bill as there was a split decision. Our legislative platform includes support positions for bills related to homelessness and mental health on page six and included here on this slide. I would also note that more information on this bill, including a list of supporters and opponents and a bill analysis from the State Assembly Committee on Health can be found in the attachments for this item. The recommended action for today is for the city council to consider adopting a position on Senate Bill thirteen thirty-eight and authorizing the mayor to send letters to the state legislature regarding the proposed legislation. And that concludes my presentation this evening. I'm here to answer questions along with Paul Gonzalez from our lobbying firm, Gonzalez and Son.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Astrid. Welcome, uh, Paul Gonzalez. We are going to go ahead and uh, per our usual practice, go to members of the public uh, for any comments on this item number thirty before we bring it back to council for follow-on questions to your uh, excellent presentation, Astrid. And so, let's go to our member of the public with a hand raised, that is Jennifer. And so Jennifer, you'll have three minutes. I'll very briefly remind our members of the public, please have your hand raised if you'd like to speak on this item before Jennifer is done speaking. And then also, if you have a blue card to hand in and you want to speak live, please do so during that time as well. And then finally, uh, over email, city council, I'm sorry, city clerk, one word at Cupertino.org. Um, you'll need to send that email in uh, by time Jennifer is done speaking as well. And so, uh, Jennifer, welcome. You'll have the three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I was at the LRC meeting when this item came up. And I think it is good for the city council and the public to have discussions about this. This is a bill that will affect the entire state. Um, I, I'm very conflicted about this one, but I am very, very concerned that, I think that the bill is well-meaning, but I don't think that there's enough money or planning that is being rolled out in conjunction with the bill to make it effective. I, I think, you know, this is a very highly sensitive public issue. We have Britney Spears' situation with conservatorship that she just went through a lot of things with her family. Um, we have a lot of people that are trying to protect relatives that have issues, and they, they feel that they can't do anything. But then, this whole issue of having a court situation, that, that is like something out of Dickens, like from the eighteen forties in England, where you shall go to the sanitarium or the workhouse, et cetera. Um, I, I don't think that this is a, going to be an effective approach. We can't solve this with a bill across the state. Um, it, my brother, who passed away five, six years ago, was a, an at-risk um, counselor for the city of Modesto. He had to go to court with young people who were in situations. A lot of them had um, health, mental health issues. A lot of them had, had been involved in um, gun possession, uh, things that happened when they were underage, uh, mental, uh, sorry, issues, that, that drug abuse, et cetera. And it's not just young people, it's other people. But we don't have Ag news anymore. That land was subdivided. It was sold. There's housing on it. Um, you don't want to put people in workhouses, which is what they used to do, or the farm, et cetera. So also, the part that I'm concerned about is there is no money for ways to treat these people. There are a severe lack of mental health counselors and professionals already in this state. My sister-in-law is a high school uh, counselor in Modesto, and she sees children all the time, young people. Um, they, there is no, there's a lack of health professionals available all over the spectrum for older people, middle-aged, younger, et cetera. Um, I'm also concerned that what's going to happen is, like SB nine and SB ten, we're going to be at our doorstep. The cities and the counties are going to be held liable for not implementing this correctly. We have no money. No money is being sent down the line adequate to provide housing, mental health, support, et cetera, for these folks.
Fifteen seconds.
We're, we're caught in a twenty, in a bind, but this is not the way to do it. You can't slap a Band-Aid on it. There has to be more research and, and you can't just-
Thank you, Jennifer. And uh, we'll go ahead and uh, having no further hands raised in Zoom, we'll refer this to our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards or emails that came in during this time?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so that will go ahead and close out the public comment on item number thirty. Let's bring this back to the dais. I will ask for, um, well, let me ask for questions, uh, because we didn't have that opportunity to ask questions of Astrid or Paul Gonzalez, who is our, uh, our outside lobbyist for the city of Cupertino. And so, uh, let me go by a show of hands with regard to questions. I see Councilmember Willie here on the dais, and then Vice Mayor Chow. And uh, we'll start with Councilmember Willie, uh, go to Vice Mayor Chow. And now Councilmember Wei has her hand raised as well.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Astrid, thank you for your uh, presentation. Question I would ask is essentially a follow-on from our resident Jennifer about the money. It sounds like a lot of money, uh, the mayor is, uh, our governor is allocating. Is, is that money um, not going to filter all the way down to the actual services? Um, are you, are you able to give us some guidance on that? Of course, the, the uh, end result of the problem is down, you know, on the road, not up in, in Sacramento. And so, is the money that he's allocating going to be, you know, down where it's going to actually be uh, helping the individuals? Although I wouldn't think it would come to Cupertino, I would think that it would come to Santa Clara County to make sure that they have the facilities set up and then make sure that they have the, the process defined so that people needing the services, whether or not they know they need it, or it's their relatives or, or uh, you know, some other uh, service that identifies that it's needed. Can you give us some guidance on that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And so I think that question was either directed to Astrid or Paul Gonzalez. And so let us go ahead and refer that question to either one of them. Uh, Paul, I see your microphone is on.
Sure, happy to answer that. Um, Mr. Mayor and, and Vice Mayor and councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Um, to answer your question, Councilmember, um, the, the money that was sent down to Santa Clara County and the other counties involved in the program, the five hundred and eighteen million, that is focused on senior and disability um, continuum of care programs, um, to try and build out that infrastructure, to make sure there's the supporting services for that community. Now, there's going to be later phases of the program with additional money that's going to be focused on youth services and childcare. Uh, but for this round, um, for round three, as we're calling it, it's, it's really focused on seniors and developing the infrastructure around um, the care for the seniors and the, and the disabled.
Okay, thanks very much, Paul. And let us, uh, was there anything else, Councilmember Willie?
Um, I, I'm, so-
Before we go into deliberation, just questions at this point, so, yeah.
So just trying to get a little bit more clarity on that. You know, when we're talking about mental health and then the way it was described about uh, assistance for, for the seniors, are you ref, you know, the, the mental health that we see on the news all too often is younger adults. And so, it's sounding like that's not the current uh, phase?
That's correct. This, this phase is going to be focused on seniors and the disabled. The next phase is going to come out, um, I believe in a few weeks. I can get you the date exactly if you'd like. Um, but that, that next phase will be focused on the youth and children in, in, at risk.
Great, thank you.
Hey, great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow next. For questions, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, okay. So for this bill particularly, it's called the CARE Court Bill. Is, is it because, my understanding is it's not going to force anyone into care? The caretakers, their families are going to present to the court the evidence and then what this patient need. And then, I'm guessing, a judge who hopefully is experienced in this kind of situation will decide what's best for this patient. And it could be voluntary admission into a facility if it's available. But if it's not, not avail, if there is no available facility, I assume the judge won't force someone to be admitted to a non-existent facility, right? Could you clarify that?
I'd be happy to. Um, you're correct. It, it is a voluntary program to a certain extent. Um, you have your, your sponsors, you have the doctors you're working with, you have the court system. Um, if all of them come back and say that you, the um, respond to you, the person needs the, the, the care, should go to this, and, should go to this program, and you do not want to go to it, you can be forced if all of the other people that are surrounding the, the process believe it's a good place for you to go.
Mm-hmm. So in terms of mental health, this could also include people who are addicted, addicted to drugs and-
As long as they-
-mental issue, then they might-
As long as they, they fall under the severe um, mental issues, that definition, and they have a drug problem, that is fine. But the, the drug problem, you cannot go just because you have a drug addiction.
Oh, it has to have a mental issue. And then that kind of issue, usually people won't willingly accept tr- treatment. Therefore, this kind of court might be necessary to help them.
That's correct.
Okay. And I do understand that a lot of supporters on this, on Senate, it's passed with uh, oh, it's bipartisan vote, only one no. And uh, a, a lot of supporters are chamber of commerce. So I understand that many people who oppose the bill are concerned that this bill might be, could you summarize what are the oppositions for the bill? What are people's concerns about the bill?
Well, the, a lot of the concerns, it comes from ACLU and, and people's ability to make their own decisions. I think that is the number one um, opposition you'll see. Counties have concerns um, with the bill because they too feel like there's not enough funding. Um, and, and a big thing is they don't, you know, this is uncharted territory for them. And it's a lot of responsibility on their shoulders. And if they fail in the eyes of the court, they can be sanctioned up to a thousand dollars per day. Um, so that's, that's a big concern for the counties. Um, for, for being able to live up to the expectations of this program and having that hammer over their head.
County will be fined, under what condition county, counties would?
The judge, under this bill, the judge has the ability to sanction counties a thousand dollars per day for not uh, providing the services requested by the CARE Court.
Okay, so the court decides a patient needs service, but the county has no facility to provide that service, service. County would be fined?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. Next we have Councilmember Wei, followed by Councilmember Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. So um, in April, the Cal City's Peninsula Division did a uh, a, a seminar on this. And we have Marjan Solam from the uh, Governor's Office come and talk with us. And it looks like at that time, that, that the implementation wasn't, um, hasn't been set- And it looks like at that time that the implementation wasn't, hasn't been set yet. Are you saying that right now they're ready to fund and ready to go?
No, no, they're, right now, the 518 million that was allocated just a few weeks ago is really to build the infrastructure for the program. I mean, it's, right now, we're thinking about electric cars, but we have nowhere to charge them. Right, we need to build the charging stations for the mental health facilities, right? We need to be able to have the services to be able, for these people to be able to be assigned to these programs to get the help that they need. Right now, that, they just don't exist in all the counties. So that's why this, the phased-out appropriations of funds for the programs is there to help kind of establish the ground rules and the framework for the program and the infrastructure for the program so that way we can get the Care Court up and running.
Okay, so the money is available and it is coming to county to set up the infrastructure for it?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So, and then we, I'm a little confused when you said it's for seniors and the disabilities first. Does it mean that the, all the referrals, they only look at the seniors and disabilities and they won't look at youth, you know, younger people until a later phase?
No, I, the, this is, that was in regards to the infrastructure funding that we were just talking about. To being, being able to create that. They're focusing on the senior and disability infrastructure needs. And the next phase will focus on the youth and children's support service needs and building out that infrastructure.
Okay, so I think that Cal Cities is taking a watch with amendments attitude because they don't think the funding is enough. I think the county is very concerned that it's not enough funding for them to implement it. Do you have any foresight that the governor might have more funding available?
I think, I think the governor and the state legislature will continue to fund this program as long as they can. I think it's pretty obvious that we're going into a recession and the state is not immune to that. And the out years for the state's budget does not look as good as it does today. So it's going to be a continuing challenge to get, to ensure that we have the funds to fund these programs. But as of now, 2.2 billion, you know, it's a lot of money to me, but you know, that's, I don't think it's a big enough pot of funding to really fund the program either.
And one last question, do you have any, the city, does the city have any role in it?
No, the city does not have any role in the Care Court. Although it is, a lot of the counties and the state is expecting cities and counties to work collaboratively together through a regional approach to try and make this program successful. Because it is going to be, your residents as well, they're going to be going to the county program. So they're looking for partnerships to try and get the people the help that they need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. It's great to see you again. I was wondering if you could define the schizophrenia spectrum for us?
I can look up the definition. I don't know it off the top of my head, but if you give me a second, I will, I will find it for you.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine. I'm just kind of making a point about that. So to me, when looking up the clinical definition for schizophrenia and then when they pair the word spectrum with it, that causes me some great concerns because there's different varieties. And when you say spectrum, that concerns me about individual civil liberties. When I look at there, there's a fact sheet online from www.gov.ca. And they say that the court-ordered response can be initiated by family, county, and community-based social services, behavioral health providers, or first responders. Individuals exiting a short-term involuntary hospital hold or an arrest may be especially good candidates for Care Court. So some of this concerns me about who would be authorized to make these determinations and the types of psychotic disorders that could result in a person in this system. And when they use that word, I'll go back to the spectrum. It's difficult to think about how this particular program is going to be implemented. And I could imagine people being involuntarily treated. In fact, there were some language that looked as though that that could happen. So, yeah, so those are my issues with that. Now, 54 million dollars was granted to the county, for Santa Clara County. And I don't quite understand what, how that money is going to be used. Do we still get it if this Care Court system is not implemented as it's shown? Because I would actually prefer to have it given to the county and have the county do some pilot programs to see what works here. So would you happen to know about that?
All I know about the funding as far as it goes by the requirements for the counties and how they spend that money is again towards the infrastructure of these programs and services. So it's not necessarily to implement Care Court itself. It's meant to bolster the continuum of care services that we have in the community to ensure that when Care Court is up and running, there are services there in the community that they can, that can meet the expectations of the court.
Okay, and some of the infrastructure, if you will, looked like it was a kinds of housing that could be purchased. But when you think about 54 million dollars in Santa Clara County, it sounds like a lot. But in practice, it really doesn't go that far if you're considering trying to get housing and support services, counseling, psychiatrists and the like. So I'm not sure if there is enough money in this, in this program. Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder to my fellow councilmembers, keep it at questions at this point. So I do see Vice Mayor Chow's hand raised. Again, Vice Mayor, do you have any follow-up questions at this point before, you don't, okay. So let me do this, before we get into a deliberative process here, let me call for a motion to consider for us to move forward with the discussion. Would anyone like to bring forward a motion? And so I'll go to, I don't see hands raised. I'll go ahead and, oh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. And so Councilmember Moore.
I'm actually leaning that we just maintain a watch position on this, on this item. Alternatively, it could be supportive amended. But I'm personally leaning towards a watch and would want to just stay there. And for the reasons that I stated, I don't like the language, the schizophrenia spectrum. What does spectrum mean?
Okay, well, let's not get into deliberation. Let's go ahead and, you know, see if we can bring that motion forward. Pardon me, I do have one question for Paul. So Paul, my question, I read over the materials and I looked at the support and the oppose. Santa Clara County is on neither one of these lists. Do you have a sense of where our county is? We have in the past worked pretty effectively with our Office of Supportive Housing. And I do think that this is an opportunity to improve that relationship and refine it over time. And this is a fairly significant amount of funding. But it would be really useful, you know, from my own perspective, to know how Santa Clara County and particularly OSH has been viewing this legislation. Do you have any insight into those questions? And I actually, sorry, I thought our acting city manager had her microphone on as well. But Paul, did you want to speak to that question?
I'm happy to, Mr. Mayor. You're correct, the county of Santa Clara does not have a position on the bill. The only county opposed to the bill is the county of Humboldt. And they are, they're opposed to the bill because, you know, they're a rural county and they have a lot of difficulties attracting the professionals needed. And they lack the housing and the infrastructure needed for the program. And they just feel like they would fall under the sanctions hammer immediately. So that's where, they're the only county that's came out in opposition. And as far as the other groups, I unfortunately don't know, but I'd be happy to look into it and report back to you.
Okay, great. And just really quick, and I apologize because this question was asked. What happens to Santa Clara County's grant of 54 million dollars under this if this legislation doesn't become effectuated as originally envisioned? Does that stay with the county as well?
You know, there's nothing in statute right now that says you have to give the money back if SB 1338 doesn't pass.
I see.
This was a budget allocation that went to the state departments and has been allocated out to the counties through the Department of Healthcare Services and will go to help bolster those programs. If SB 1338 doesn't pass, my assumption would be that the funding stays there and improves the programs for what they are, even though, which could still be a benefit to the community to have a, you know, a 54 million dollar, you know, injection from the state towards the services. But there's nothing in statute that says the money has to go back if this bill doesn't pass.
Okay, of course. Thank you very much, Paul. And so, yep, go ahead.
If I may, I would also say that there's nothing that prohibits the legislature from coming back and wanting to ask for that money back in the future either.
Of course, of course. So it's essentially neutral, but there's no requirement right now that the money go back by any kind of a default. So, okay, so let's go back to Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, you had articulated a couple of potential motions. One was to keep the LRC's position of a watch or potentially to have an improved, if amended, position. Would you like to bring either one of those motions forward at this time?
I move that we have a watch position.
As a council, okay. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? Vice Mayor Chow, I see your hand raised. Would you like to?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, very good. So I'll make note, Councilmember Moore moves. And Vice Mayor Chow, seconds, that we maintain the watch position recommended by the LRC as a full council. Having a motion and a second on the dais, let us go to deliberate. Would anyone like to speak on this? I see a hand raised from Councilmember Willie. And Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised as well. So I'll call on you after we go to Councilmember Willie for deliberation on this motion.
So I appreciate all the questions. And I put those questions in, in my view, you know, that I think we've all seen in the news over the years that any time from the twenties to 1920s to 1950s, there were programs that dealt with like mental illness or orphans or, you know, any of the problems that a society winds up with and that they weren't dealt with well, or they were, quite frankly, just done very badly. But I'd like to think that in the year 2022, I'd like to think that we've come a long way from making outright bad decisions. That being said, we also see that, in my view, we have a lot more visible signs that there are mental illness than when I was growing up, the 1970s. I don't remember ever really seeing anything dysfunctional like we're seeing, you know, in our last 20 years. And so what are the factors that are causing all this? More stress on everybody, more demands on everybody, expectations on everybody, whatever those causes are that saturate or overload people and manifest in many different ways. I can appreciate that there are a lot of people out there that are suffering. Maybe there's always been a large number and it just wasn't visible, but it is visible now. Or maybe it's more of a current coming of this type of problem. That all being said, when I see so much inappropriate, you know, types of behavior that are not just, you know, acts of deliberate type things, but acts that go beyond what reasonable people would do. And it's just happening to them or they're doing it without realizing it. And so then how can we help them? I mean, how can we help them? How can we get them treatment, things of that nature? So now moving on to maybe the third way of looking at this. If there is funding that Sacramento is deeming, you know, their ability to make it available, I would tend to think that being too mild down where we sit is perhaps sending a wrong message that we're not seeing it being important enough. I'm not sure everybody would agree with that. But to me, the other message would be, yes, we support this. We hear that you are feeling, you know, Sacramento, you are feeling that this is an important enough issue in our society for a strong functioning society, that we do need to get help for these people. Help that is not part of a normal health program that everybody gets at their workplace. You know, you break a leg or, you know, you get sick in the winter. You know, these are things that are psychological and just not typically a significant part of that. And so if we did send a stronger message to them that, thank you, thank you. We do support your putting this money out. Yeah, it may not be enough money. Yeah, maybe there's not all the checks and balances and the correct understanding. But I do think that in this day and age, in 2022, we are better prepared than at any time in the past to understand the issues of mental health, understand the types of services that would be helpful to the people. So I personally would have liked a stronger position so that we are sending a message back to Sacramento. Keep on this and let's get started. If, you know, the kind of the classic phrase, you know, if not now, when? And so I think it should get started and there will be some missteps. But we can't correct those missteps and still we start taking them. So I'll leave it at that. I'm perfectly okay with taking a watch point. But I would have liked to send a message a little bit stronger telling them, thank you, and, you know, keep moving on it. So, thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And I will go ahead and call on Vice Mayor Chow at this point. I'll put myself into the line here after Vice Mayor Chow's comment. And I would like to propose actually a friendly amendment in addition to the motion at that time. Vice Mayor Chow, then me, and then Councilmember Wei.
Yeah, okay. So my first instinct at the time when we did review this in LRC was to support this because I know there are parents who hope they can get their children admitted, but then the children are not willing to. And they, this will be helpful for some situation. But I understand Councilmember Moore also raised the issue that it could be abused. And then I looked at the list of supporters. It's a list of the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of cities with homeless, severe homeless properties. Then I recognize that, that yes, we, there are businesses who suffer because of this uncontrolled homeless situation. And it needs to be dealt with. However, if this is used as a tool to remove homeless people without actually providing the care they need in a way to clean up a street, then I'm not sure that's the- then I'm not sure that's the intent of the bill. But looking at the list of supporters, I'm concerned about that. And then this bill slowly is getting a lot of opposition from people who actually provide care for this vulnerable population. So I'm starting to be concerned that I don't really understand this situation. This is not really a city issue. That's why I don't know how. I need to spend a lot more time to really talk to these organizations who actually work with these people to understand this deeper. But I don't have that time to, and we don't have that staff resource to do that. But I want to bring your attention to some of the concerns. Yes, there is only one county that opposed this bill. But there is one that's from county coalition of 13 individual counties. I don't know if that includes Santa Clara or not. But they raised some good potential modifications to the bill. For example, they request based in implementation so that it gives the county time to build up the facility. And then they request resources in the hundreds of millions of dollars, not the current token of dollars, millions of dollars, to actually provide facilities that eventually this might work. And then in terms of the sanction, they request sanctions should be reserved for deliberate and chronic deficiencies imposed only after meaningful engagement within the existing regulatory framework along with appropriate procedural safeguard. In addition, sanctions should not begin until after the program has been fully funded and implemented. So these are the concerns raised by the county coalition. So yes, I think it's a good idea. So finally, the legislators are doing something about the homeless crisis. But sometimes a move that's too fast without thinking through may backfire, may not be the best thing. So maybe this is good that they proposed that, but maybe they should really refine their approach next year, come back with a better bill. So maybe let's watch and see how these advocacy groups can really work out a better solution for the vulnerable population. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. I am going to keep my friendly amendment request very concise. And I did think about adding another component to it. But let me just ask for a friendly amendment to the movement, which is Councilmember Moore, and I'll go to the second or Vice Mayor Chow, if that's accepted. Would you be willing to add to the language of the motion to authorize the mayor to write a letter to the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing and the County Board of Supervisors to ask for the position of the county on SB 1338? Would that be amenable to your motion? Councilmember Moore, yes?
Well, I'd like to say yes, but with an explanation. And that is that when I look at the lists of cities that are in support, I can't find a single one from our county. And I thought that was kind of curious. I also don't see, and I would have expected to see, San Francisco. What I do see from San Francisco was the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce and I believe I saw a hotel. Yes, the Hotel Council of San Francisco. So if anyone else is looking at the list and sees the city of San Francisco, I'm not.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that explanation and agreeing to add that as the movement. Let me go to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, would you be willing to accept a friendly amendment to the motion as I articulated it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So now we have the motion by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Vice Mayor Chow, along with my friendly amendment. Councilmember Wei, you are next on deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I sort of agree with Councilmember Willie that, you know, I am glad that the governor is looking at this issue. It's not just homeless, it's really mental health for all age groups. And I have dealt with quite of them, and the parents, the dolls, they just don't know what to do. And when you have someone who's refused to go to treatment, it is very difficult situation. So I think this care court's concept is very, very good. What I see, according to the last Peninsula Division seminar that I went to, is the implementation, and also it's the money. So I do believe the counties are very hesitant because, you know, just like any school does, you, or the city, if there's a mandate, you need to do this, but there's not enough money, what do you do? You have to move some money somewhere else to satisfy it. So any mandate from the state needs to come with sufficient funding. I do think funding is a major issue for the county. So, and so that's why I would agree that we ask our county and our county board of supervisors what their positions are, what do they need? Maybe we can support, eventually support what they need and write a stronger letter to the governor. But I do agree with Councilmember Willie, it's time to start it, right? And we have, if there is money to start it and we know or the county knows there is afterward money to support it. And I do think mental health issues is a major issue that we need to face. So, yeah, I will support the motion on the table.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on the motion. Councilmember Moore, you do have your hand raised. Did you want to speak before we call for the vote?
Yes, just a little bit. I want to make sure that in wanting to help with the problem of mentally ill homeless individuals that we are not going back to some of the conditions that I think some of us remember with regards to the mental hospitals that we used to have. I think a lot of us have probably seen the movie One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, which was, which brought a lot of attention to the treatment that people with psychiatric disorders were receiving, which it played a part in the movement to close the state mental hospitals. So I don't want to see us head that way. So in what we're writing, you know, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And, you know, just for the record, I'm going to go ahead and read the modified motion, friendly amendment that I was going to set forward. But I think at this point, it's important for us to keep it streamlined and achievable and take it in a stepwise fashion, just like with things like climate change and plastics and, you know, all this kind of stuff. Let's take it stepwise. But just to clarify why I'm asking for this information, and I think it's generally consistent, but I'm not sure it's completely ripe at this time. So this is what I would have asked, if we're maybe a step or two along, as a friendly amendment, authorize the mayor to write a letter to the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing and the County Board of Supervisors to ask for the position of the county on SB 1338, which is essentially, you know, what that friendly amendment is. But I would have added this, if we're at the right time, with a copy to the sponsors of the bill and Cupertino's representatives to the state legislature and to express a willingness on the part of the city of Cupertino to continue to work with the county to help facilitate and ensure the success of the intentions of the proposed legislation to address and resolve the issues of mental health and the unhoused presented by the bill. Now, the reason I wanted to go ahead and read that into the record is that I think that there is a sentiment expressed here that is captured by the desires of the members of the council, all of us on the dais and on Zoom. But let's do our due diligence and make sure that the table is set in order for us to be successful in these efforts. It's what I would recommend. So there's that motion on the table. It is not the motion with the friendly amendment that I just read. It is simply the motion with the friendly amendment to get that information from the County Board of Supervisors and the Office of Supportive Housing with regard to their position on this SB 1338. So I don't see further hands raised at this time. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
So I'm a little confused by what you just read because it's showing more support towards 1338 than I would want because we had a watch position and you're showing more. It just reads, it sounds like an affirmative towards it as opposed to a watch. And where I would be supportive of making it clear that we have a watch position, we'd like to hear what your view is. And that what you just read is not as neutral as it had been.
Oh, understood. And that's why I didn't propose it as the friendly amendment. And so I think, let me suggest this. My comment, together with your comment, are a fair representation of the arc of sentiments coming from the dais. And so what we can agree upon at this point is that you have your motion on the table and my friendly amendment is purely informational to get that piece of information from the county or the County Office of Supportive Housing or both as to what their position is on the proposed SB 1338. But just like you are entitled to express your perspective on potential next steps, I'm also entitled to express my perspective on what potential next steps might be once we get that, you know, information. And of course, you know, I'm not on the dais in five months, you presumptively are. And so as the cycle looks, I'm not seeing this coming back to this council. If that's any, you know, this iteration of the two-year cycle of the council. And so if that's any comfort, you can take it forward as you please as a continuous member. But, you know, for my part, I think I'm a little bit more aligned with the sentiment expressed by council members. Excuse me, Willie and Wei. I do see coughing fit coming on, so. Pardon me. Let me take. Two-minute break. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I just was overcome with coughing fit. I'm not, to respect my fellow members on the dais, I'm not contagious in any way, shape, or form with regard to, you know, any issues right now. But let me go ahead and bring it back to item number 31. And if I'm losing my voice, then I'm going to go ahead and ask our vice mayor to go ahead. And let me correct that that's item 30. I'm going to go ahead and ask our vice mayor through Zoom to go ahead and take over the moderation of the meeting. But item 30, we have a motion and a second, as well as the friendly amendment on the dais. Councilmember Moore and I were engaged in a discussion as to some comments. I made some comments to further clarify my position on the motion and friendly amendment. Councilmember Moore went ahead and clarified her perspective. But with the leave of everyone, now that that information is out there, hopefully we don't need to belabor the point of our respective positions. And the friendly amendment was purely informational. If we could have a vote, that would be greatly appreciated. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised. Did you want to speak to this item before we vote?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I have similar concern as Councilmember Moore that your friendly amendment is taking a stronger position towards supporting this without highlighting the concerns. So I'm sharing that here is from attachment B, where I mentioned the comments from the county coalition. So if we are, if you are adding your comment, then I would like the same letter to raise the concerns raised by the county coalition as listed in this page and then the oppositions that's mentioned here. Because it's very easy for me initially. I, my first instinct is to support this. It seems to be a great idea. But I, reading people who know more about this, 40 different advocacy groups, then I want, I am interested in asking county what they think about this. But at the same time, I would like to say we recognize there are oppositions, there are concerns. And we would like to support the county to support this population. And what do you think about this care court? So rather than saying we support this care court, but that we know this seems to be a good idea, but there are concerns and oppositions. What, to your view, would this help Santa Clara County?
Well, thank you very much for the comment, Vice Mayor Chow. What I would suggest is that we direct our lobbyists, as well as Astrid from our staff, to construct a neutral correspondence to the county, simply asking for the information. We don't have to include the tone of the dicta that has been expressed by yourself and Councilmember Moore and originally myself. So I think that's a good compromised position and we all have our ability to go ahead and express our perspectives here. And I'm not going to have sharp elbows about this. I actually think I might have three votes to go ahead and put in a substitute motion for support on this, you know, legislation. But in an effort to try to arrive at a consensus and do this in a stepwise fashion, I'm happy to keep that friendly amendment unedited and to get that neutral information. So is that acceptable to everyone at this point? And I won't have any kind of role in wordsmithing the letter. We'll just ask Astrid, as well as Paul, to help us with that correspondence to county. Is that acceptable to everyone? Okay, so I see a head nod, head nod on my right, as well as from Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor, you're not, you seem to be smiling. So let's go ahead and resolve this particular motion and this item. Thank you, everyone, for your forbearance here. And so Madam City Clerk, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Wei.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Now we are past nine o'clock. It's 9:20. We will go back, per our postponements and orders of the day, to item number 28. This is the first item under ordinances and action items. The subject is to consider the appointment of Pamela Wu as city manager and approval of an at-will city manager employment agreement and to consider proposed amendments to the appointed employees' compensation program. And so I do have a statement that I need to read into the record per our city attorney's office. And so, per legal requirement, in accordance with Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), I am providing an oral summary of the recommended action. The item before the council tonight is to set the salary and terms and conditions of employment for the city manager position effective August 29, 2022. The proposed base compensation is $298,000 effective August 29, 2022. The employment agreement also provides for an automobile allowance of $500 per month. The total annual compensation is $431,779, inclusive of fringe benefits, payroll taxes, and retirement contributions. Additional details regarding this item are set forth in the agenda and resolution associated with the item. And so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to our staff. Our presenter listed on the agenda is Diane Thompson, our acting city manager. And Diane, do you have anything to add to the introduction of this item?
Yes, I'll just add a few comments. First of all, Mayor Paul and city council, I'm very pleased to present this item to the council, which is consideration of an employment agreement with Pamela Wu. She has been selected by the council as your top candidate for the city manager position and a proposed contract has been negotiated. The mayor has described the terms of that contract. And the recommended action this evening is to consider adopting a resolution approving the manager's employment agreement and also a resolution amending the appointed employees' compensation program. There is no fiscal impact to this item. And I think that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Great, thank you very much, Diane. Per our usual practice, I will go ahead and take this to the members of the public. If anyone has any commentary, please raise your hand on Zoom. Or if you are here in community hall, please feel free to fill out a blue card. Or during this time allocated for the first speaker, we'll go ahead and ask people to email any comment that you want read into the record by our city clerk for up to three minutes. That's cityclerkone word@cupidino.org. And at this time, I see that Jennifer has her hand raised. And so Jennifer, you will be the first to speak on this item. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I'm welcoming our new city manager. Thank you for Diane for taking over, and thank you to our previous city manager. These are very, very difficult jobs in difficult times. We need to be very appreciative of our staff members because there are a lot of things going on in this state. We've had COVID, we have to deal with Zoom, we have, you know, lots of political intrigue nationally, internationally, locally, statewide, et cetera. And we need to remember that these are supportive jobs. They're jobs that people do as a living, but they're also jobs that people do because they care. And anyone that is coming to, I said California, coming to Cupertino to work, I'm very, very glad that they're thinking of taking a job with Cupertino because we are very appreciative of having them here. It's a tough job, but I think that Cupertino is a very important, active city, and I'm appreciative of the staff we have for the time you're here, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. And next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I am here to express my objections to the process that this city council has taken in selecting a permanent city manager, given that Cupertino has had six city managers in the last four years, three of which were permanent managers who resigned abruptly. Each change is disruptive to the operations of the city. With Jim Trup's resignation, I expected another search to cast a wide net for qualified candidates. The last search occurred a year ago, and more candidates may have become available during that time period. Instead, the position was offered to a candidate who was considered during last year's interview cycle without interviewing other candidates. In addition, I object to this lame duck council hiring a permanent manager instead of an interim city manager. Council will change in November, and the new council should have had the opportunity to select the permanent city manager. Please reconsider the process. The community deserves better consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jean. And we'll go ahead and take it to our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, were there any blue cards or people that emailed in during the time of the first speaker?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We will go ahead and bring this back to the dais. And so are there any questions of the presenter in accordance to our common practice? I don't see any indicators that there are. I do see that we have our applicant here, Pamela Wu. And Pamela, welcome. Thank you for being here with us in community hall this evening. Did you want to say a few words on this item?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu. Hopefully, I'll be your newly appointed city manager. I'm grateful and for the opportunity and your confidence in me. I'm also honored and looking forward to lead the city and also to be part of the community. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for the opportunity for me to come in in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. And let us go ahead and bring this back to council. And so let me ask for any motions from our council. Is there any motion from either our Zoom attendees or our dais? And I will ask for motion based upon the recommended action, which is to consider adopting resolution number 22-090, approving that will city manager employment agreement between the city of Cupertino and Pamela Wu, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. And two, consider adopting resolution number 22-091, amending the appointed employees' compensation program. And so is there a motion to that effect? I see Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised. Would you like to bring that motion?
When Pamela speak, the camera wasn't on her. We can see her at the virtual meeting.
Okay. And so if you wanted to bring Pamela back up, I suppose we could ask video to focus the camera upon. I was able, actually, to see her, I think, on the dais. Well, no, not just on in person, but on the screen that's in front of us on the dais. But perhaps on the Zoom meeting, it's not reflective of what is showing up on YouTube or the city channel. But let us go ahead and provide that opportunity, Vice Mayor. Did you want to ask any questions of Pamela at this time?
If I could?
Sure. Please proceed.
Pamela, I understand you live in Sunnyvale, and you have many years of experience in the county and the cities.
That is correct, Vice Mayor Chow. I do live in Sunnyvale. As Mayor alluded to earlier during the meeting today, I had to chair a planning commission meeting. Fortunately, I was able to do that at home, wrap it up, and drive over here in five minutes. And to answer your second question, that is also correct. I was with Santa Cruz County for about 17 years. I started my planning career with the county and eventually went out to other cities. And then I'm currently employed with City of San Bruno.
And you attended Cupertino schools, right?
I could say that. So I went to Lynbrook High, which is part of Fremont Union High School in Cupertino. And both of my children graduated from Fremont High School, which is also part of Fremont Union High School, you know, considered Cupertino.
Great, thank you. So I would like to clarify that we had, I went through two rounds of city council, county manager search. And I would say that Pamela is always at the top of the list. And then it was top two, and very hotly debated, top two, we debated it past midnight. And just the top two candidates, each have their strength, just different strengths. And so I think, like Mayor said in his press release, sometimes it is necessary to take a certain path so that we can come to our best solution. So I am looking forward to your service in Cupertino.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And before we go to Councilmember Wei, Vice Mayor, did you want to bring forward that default motion as the?
Yeah, okay, still move.
Okay. Councilmember Wei, before we call on you, did you want to second the motion? Or would you like to make some?
I would second it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. And so we'll go ahead. I see the, okay, so the camera on community hall has switched to the middle camera. So Councilmember Wei, since you're the seconder with the hand raised, please feel free to deliberate on the motion on the dais if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I would like to welcome Pamela to be our city manager. The thing that strikes me really, really hardcore in my heart is not just because she is an Asian-American woman, or she is a local graduate, or she lives in Sunnyvale. I do believe, by talking with Pamela, she has that sense of participation, that passion to be part of a community, that to grow not just her career, but also be part of something that surrounds her. So I can feel that from her, and I really believe that, I understand some criticism might be she doesn't have any city manager's experience. You know, she's maybe not being interviewed again with another poll. But I would wholeheartedly welcome Pamela to be part of the city of Cupertino, because I can see her drive, and I see her determination, and I can see her talents. And everybody has to start to be a city manager somewhere. So this may be a little big jump for Pamela, but I think she can prove to us and to our residents that she can learn, and she learns fast, and she can be a part of Cupertino for a long time. And one thing that really, really impressed me when Pamela says, actually, maybe literally says to the council, "Don't expect a lot of quick actions from me now, because I need to set up my team, I need to get to know Cupertino, and I need to get ready." And so that she's, according to her words, she's well-prepared to take actions. And I'm very impressed with that. And I do believe that's a good attitude to come into a brand-new situation, a brand-new job, a challenge to herself, and to be part of the community. And we have wonderful residents, and we have wonderful staff. So I do believe we have an environment that could complement her expertise and her talent and her drive and her passion. So I look forward to working with Pamela. And I understand there might be some objections, but, you know, Pamela, as you said, you're going to prove yourself that you are a good choice. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Great. So happy that Pam was able to attend tonight in person. Being what I consider to be a very old-school person, there's nothing that can take the place of human interaction, being able to meet a person, smile at the person, have a nice conversation. Facebook, Twitter, emails, no. It really leaves us without the more intrinsic value of human relations. And so I'm so glad you're here. I will always try to do things in one-on-ones as opposed to sending lots of emails, being able to answer questions and share ideas, things that really don't work that well on email. Okay, that being said, I'm so happy that you're going to be joining us here. We really value our city. That's why we're up here. You know, we're not paid to be up here. We're up here because we volunteer, because our city, our community, matter to us. We call this place our home, and we hope that you'll be here helping us navigate the future of our home. Growth is needed, is required, it's part of life. It's a challenge in a city, in a community that's built out. We aren't like San Jose with the South San Jose area that's a green belt, that has lots of potential for housing. We hear about something like 3,600 acres down there that they're going to be cutting up and putting into different items. So ours has to be done from within, and that means there's a lot of impacts for all these types of changes and growth. And that's what really, really comes to me as why you're the best candidate for us, that you're a degree from Berkeley in architecture with a focus in city planning. Yes. A city manager, finance is important, yes, but we have a good finance department. Staff is hugely important, and they're very valuable to us. Where's our city planning? And it's so vital to us, and to have the helm, clearly understanding how the growth is going to be impacting the community, how we can adjust the community, how we can make way for these things, I just think, wow, you are really important to help guide this. With the way things are, with the pandemic, we have a lot less attendees in our council meetings, but historically, these chairs are pretty well-attended. So with the pandemic, it's kind of changed. I'm really looking forward to this. I just wanted to make one comment. It's about time. It's about time. I feel that Jean Bedor's comments tonight, like many other times, are so uncalled for. It's like a blind person thinking that they can play baseball. Nothing could be further from the truth. We looked at a lot of candidates over the last three and a half years. And in my view, you are the standout of that entire process. And so I truly believe that we will be looking back five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. How did our city move forward with all these requirements to grow? And we'll be saying, wow, we're so lucky that we had Pam to help us with that. So with that, thank you. I look forward, anything I can do in your time here, I'm at your disposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore, and I see that Councilmember Wei has her hand raised again. I'll make a comment after Councilmember Moore, and we'll bring it back to Councilmember Wei after that. Councilmember Moore?
First, we did move the recommended action. So welcome, Pamela. I do want to respond, there is a thing called beep baseball, so legally blind individuals can actually play baseball. So there it is. It does happen. Anyway, I wanted to look that up just to fact-check. And on that note, I'm pleased that Pamela is very detailed-oriented. I think that it'll be a nice fit. I think the planning experience that you have will be particularly useful in helping advise on our housing element moving forward and our annual objective standards review. And I also noticed the CEQA background as well, which is going to be beneficial. And I hope you're able to stick around or at least watch on YouTube the rest of the agenda tonight, because we've been going through an internal controls review. So there's a nice overview for the rest of the city departments, which I think would be excellent and very timely. So welcome.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. I'll make my comment very brief. I had the luxury of being able to provide the quote in the press release, and so I won't reiterate and reiterate the comments of my colleagues as well. But I am very happy that we are at this point. And one thing I will say about the applicant, Pamela Wu, I find it really remarkably fortunate and optimistic, because I do believe that this candidate is going to be just a phenomenal manager. And so I truly, just, I apologize for this, but I'm going to reiterate that last line of my press release quote. I really think that this is a person, over the course of the next few months, is going to give us a lot of reasons. is going to give us a lot of reasons that we're so happy that they're going out into the community and meeting the community of Cupertino and, you know, all the various people that affect us and are affected by us, but also taking on the job of management. I think that people are pointing out, hey, look, you know, you don't have, you know, the city manager experience, but you have 17 years at the county. You've been with Santa Clara County Gilroy before San Bruno. And I think the intangible I can bring to the table here, because what I can say is that it wasn't a year ago, it was really more like half a year ago, right, with regard to the recruitment process. And as, you know, some people like to point out, you know, you've gone through, you know, six city managers, which is actually, you know, like other people point out, that's not accurate. That's interim city managers, including in that count. However, everyone also knows that the industry just generally is in great flux, right? You and I talked about how San Bruno, out of its eight executive team members, five of them, right, just in the last, very recent past, have turned over, and that's not unusual. But what I will say is that, you know, our interactions with regard to about half a year ago in the recruitment that we just had, I didn't have as clear of a sense of your management style and capabilities. But I did know that you went into San Bruno a few years ago and built up a really good team that where you, you know, oversee various, you know, parts of not just planning, but economic development, for instance. And so I had real hopes. I hate to put Chris on the spot, but I analogize it to Chris, seeing his paper abilities and meeting him. Basically, I thought, once I was on the subcommittee negotiating the compensation, I realized, okay, Cupertino needs this person, okay? Cupertino needs the management skills that are just very clearly advanced in my mind. And so I will lay that on the line with regard to my comment about Chris. I didn't think that we would be able to find a city attorney candidate that could do a better job than I could. And I will go ahead and say this right now. We have found somebody that would do a better job because, you know, if for no other reason, Chris has the proclivity to do this job as well. But I think we are going to find a generational pick in you, Pamela, with regard to a city manager. So I just, I can't wait. I can't wait till we get to the next several months. And so, you know, the supporters and detractors, I'm happy to have these conversations. But honestly, I look forward, for the first time in seven and a half years, to Cupertino. I feel just 100% happy with regard to where we're at at this point. So let me go back to Councilmember Way. Councilmember Way, you have your hand raised. And I noticed that Councilmember Willie, you still have your hand raised. If that's not artificial, then, okay, so Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, just very briefly. I want to, you know, give Pamela this impression that actually, a fact that I think all our residents will embrace a new manager, Pamela, and wish her and help her to be successful. I do believe Jim's criticism is toward the council, not Pamela. And, you know, whether it's, you know, whether we accept it or not, if we have different opinions, that's okay. But I want to let city manager Pamela Wu know that the whole city, and I'm pretty sure all the residents, are looking forward to your leadership. And then we are a good city, we have great residents who support our staff, and you have great staff to work with. So I'm really happy that we are going to have a permanent city manager for, hopefully, for many, many years to come.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And any other comments at this point? I don't see any. I will say, as far as Councilmember Way's last point goes, I did find out over the course of this negotiating period that Pamela Wu and I share a high school class. And I won't date us in terms of when that was, but I think it is safe to say that we have great prospects for the foreseeable future. So without any further ado, I'm going to look again to see if there are any other hands raised here. I don't see any. Madam City Clerk, could you please? Oh, Councilmember Willie, you now have your hand raised on the Zoom function, no less. Councilmember Willie.
Oh, I do think life needs to be fun and a little bit of humor once in a while would be nice. I don't know how many people watch America's Got Talent. But for those of us who do watch it, you know, kids that like to watch it at home, if there was a little red golden buzzer here, I'd reach over and hit the golden buzzer. And now, back to the mayor, let's take care of this.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Let us go ahead and conduct the roll call vote. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We are now at 9:48. Let's take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 9:54. We'll see you then.